There are open seats throughout the middle of the auditorium. If you're interested, please move toward the center and you can grab one of those open seats. Thank you. I appreciate everyone being here tonight and for being ready for our meeting. We are going to call the meeting to order, so let me get the meeting started. I would like to welcome all people here tonight to the 1,000, excuse me, 1,194th regular meeting and public hearing of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in the audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda, which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the city council, and the city council, after holding their own public hearing, will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission holds the only public hearing on request for preliminary plat's and/or vacating petitions. The commission's recommendation is forwarded to city council for the final determination as to whether a petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition is requesting a waiver of use or a site plan and is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to city council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission become effective seven days after the date of adoption. Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. The staff has furnished the commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the commission may or may not use, depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. We'll start with our secretary to please call the roll.
Mrs. De Naro.
Here.
Mr. Bongero.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Karen Magnos here, Chairman Willschaw.
Is here, and also with us tonight we have Mark Toramina and Stephanie Reese from our planning department. Before I get started into our agenda, I believe Mr. Long has a motion he would like to make.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We have a couple items on the agenda that are perhaps a little less interesting to the crowd, but hopefully not controversial, and we can get through them pretty quickly and get our petitioners on the way. So I'd like to move items three and four from the agenda up on the agenda to become the new number one and two.
Okay.
Leaving the rest of the agenda in order.
Is there support for that motion?
Second.
We have support from Ms. De Naro. If there's no objection, I think we can safely show five on that. I see no objections from anyone, so we're going to reorder our agenda slightly to accommodate some of our petitioners, as we do have one item on our agenda that most of you are probably here for, and we want to let some of these other petitioners get through quickly. I also want to announce, for record-keeping purposes, that item number five on our agenda, if there's anyone in our audience that's here for number five, which is the Hertz rental facility, they have asked that their item be removed from our agenda tonight. They're withdrawing their petition at this time. So if there's anyone here for that item, you're welcome to stay around and watch the other ones, but there will not be any discussion on that tonight. Just so that everyone in our audience understands, I know several of you probably have never been to one of our meetings before, so I want to explain as we go how the meetings work. We're going to call out each of these agenda items, and once the item has been called, we're going to go to our staff to give background information on the agenda item. They'll just give background on the history of these items and what's being requested. We'll then ask the petitioner to come forward and speak to us. We're going to have some questions for the petitioner, and then we'll have an opportunity after we've had a chance to talk to the petitioner, for folks in our audience who wish to speak for or against the agenda, to also come forward and speak before we make our decision. So I'll prompt everyone along as we go, and that's how our meetings are ran. Let's see, is there anything else that I have missed? I don't see anything else. One other item before we do start into our agenda I do want to mention is we have an empty seat up here for Carol Smiley, who is a longtime member of the Planning Commission. She has, in the last few weeks before, between her previous meeting and this one, which was a couple months, submitted her resignation from the commission after 20 years of service on the Planning Commission, and she's going to continue to be active in the city. I'm sure she's watching our meeting tonight, and I just want to acknowledge her many, many years of service to the city and to the Planning Commission. She was a longtime secretary of the commission, and we really do appreciate her service, her wisdom, and all the contributions that she's made, not only to the community, but to each of us as colleagues of hers. So we really appreciate Carol's service, and we wish her very, very well in her future activities with the city. So I just want to mention that. Thank you. I'm sure she very much appreciates that ovation, so thank you, everyone. With that, we're going to start with our public hearing section of our agenda, and Mr. Secretary, this is going to be item number, what was three?
Now, number one, petition 2022-12-02-22 submitted by Uptown Cheapskate requesting waiver use approval under Section 6.53 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance as amended in connection with a proposal to operate a secondhand store and resale shop at 29508 Seven Mile Road within the Livonia Marketplace Retail Center located on the north side of Seven Mile Road between Middle Belt and Pearling Brook in the southeast quarter of Section 2.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is a request for a secondhand store and resale shop at the Livonia Marketplace. Resale shops are regulated under Section 6.53 of the zoning ordinance. Uptown Cheapskate would occupy an end unit, which is in retail building D on the east end of the property, or the east side of the property, directly behind Bank of America. The other tenants in this building include Coney Island Inn, as well as Hibachi Express. The unit that Uptown Cheapskate would occupy is roughly 3,920 square feet. Floor plan was submitted with the application. It shows the interior layout of the space. As would be expected, it includes racks and shelves, counters, and display cases. The store would also have dressing rooms, restrooms, a storage area, and an office. So Uptown Cheapskate does specialize in the sale of used, or slightly-used clothes and shoes and accessories, as well as new items. The store operates very similar to shops like Plato's Closet, where individuals bring the items to the store that they wish to sell, and if the merchandise is worth purchasing, then the store does give them either cash or in-store credit. The ordinance does stipulate that there not be any outdoor storage or display of merchandise. They have no intentions of doing that at this location. As is expected, the parking is adequate at Livonia Marketplace, so that's not an issue. There would be no changes or modifications to the building other than signage. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I am happy to read out the correspondence.
Yes, please.
Departments responding include the Engineering Division. They indicate that the parcel is currently served by Public Sewer, Water Main, and Sanitary Sewer, as well as privately-owned storm sewer. Based on the submitted drawings, there should be no impacts to the existing systems as a result of the proposed project. It should be noted that any work planned in the Seven Mile Road right-of-way or any disturbances within the right-of-way are going to require the permits from Wayne County Department of Public Services, and that letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant Engineer. We have a letter of no objection coming from the Fire Marshal, Brian Kukla, dated January 10th. A letter of no objection coming from the Traffic Bureau, Scott Shipansky, Sergeant, and that letter is dated December 19th. A letter of no objection coming from the Inspection Department dated January 17th and signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of the Inspection. A letter of no objection coming from the accountant, Chief Accountant, Connie Campula, and that's from the Department of Finance dated December 15th. And then from the Treasurer's Office indicating that there are no taxes due on the property, thus they have no objections. That letter is dated January 5th and signed by Linda Shield, Treasurer of the City. And then lastly, we have a letter from a resident dated January 18th that says, that reads, "You have my permission to operate a secondhand store and resale shop at 29508 Seven Mile Road within the Livonia Marketplace. I live at 30330 Vassar Street, Livonia, Michigan 48152. I will not be able to attend the meeting on January 31st," and it is signed by Roseanne Parker. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Is there any questions of our planning staff? Seeing none is the petitioner here. Please come forward. Good evening. We ask that you start with your name and address for our record.
Yes, my name is Angela Moore. I live at 15462 Granville Avenue in Detroit, Michigan 48223.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. What would you like to tell us about your business?
Well, I think the, everything was given already about the business. It is a resale, upscale resale store for men's and women's apparel and accessories. It's a franchise. They own, they have over 148 stores across the US. They're based in Utah. I would be the second, no, I take that back, I'd be the third in Michigan. There's one in Grand Rapids, and there's one in Granville, Michigan, and then there's a new one coming in Holland, Michigan. But I'll be the third in Livonia.
Okay, that sounds good. Is there any questions from any of our commissioners for the petitioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Karen Magnos.
I see you've got double, you've got double frontage. You've got frontage on the west side of your location and frontage on the east side of your location.
Yes.
Will you only have one entrance?
Yes, one entrance. The back is just the back door, but that's not an entrance for customers at all.
Okay, and how about signage? Will you have signage only on the west side or both sides?
Signage on the front and signage on the back.
So you have two signs?
Yes.
And then, how about your rubbish? You put rubbish out back in the enclosure? What will you do with your trash?
Every paper trash. There's no clothing trash, but paper trash receptacles.
Will you share a dumpster out in the back?
Yes.
Or is it, you'll share with the other users?
Yes, there is a dumpster in the back, yes.
Okay, thank you.
But no clothing, it's just, it'll be paper trash.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions for our petitioner? I don't see any other questions from any of our commissioners. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this petition? I don't see anybody jumping up. If you have a question, please come forward.
I'd be able to pledge to get their items back, or is it just say?
Sir, you'll have to come forward. We do have a TV audience as well, they can't hear you.
I wasn't here for that, I just had a question.
We have a vast TV audience, it's probably smaller than what's here now, actually. Maybe not tonight.
It's just a question, is, I know a lot of resale shops, they can also turn into like pawn shops, where they pledge to buy the item, or to sell the item back to the person after 30, or 60, or 90 days. I just want to know if that was any part of your business plan.
Okay, so let's just get your name and address, so we can attribute those comments to you.
Dan Sterling, 31633 Curtis Road.
Thank you, sir.
Right.
And what I'll do is I'll ask the petitioner just to explain her business model a little bit, so it should hopefully answer your question.
Yes, so to his question, no, we are not a consignment shop. So our vendors bring the items in, in a bin, or like a laundry basket. They're clean, they're laundered, and we go through them, take out the things that we can purchase from them, and we either give them cash on the spot, or we give them store credit. Anything that we cannot use or cannot sell goes back home with the vendor, so it's not consignment.
So you're purchasing those items and then reselling them?
Yes. They are immediately tagged and placed out on the floor.
Okay. Thank you for answering that question. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this item? I don't see anyone else coming forward. Is there any other comments from any of the commissioners or questions? If not, thank you, Ms. Moore.
You're welcome.
A motion would be in order.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Long.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution. This request to operate a secondhand store and resale shop, Uptown Cheapskate, at 29508 Seven Mile Road is approved, subject to city council approval on the following conditions. Number one, that there shall be no outdoor sales, storage, or display of merchandise, and no storage of merchandise or other materials in temporary or portable units, structures, trailers, or donation receptacles located on the exterior of the building. Number two, this waiver use is limited to this user only, and may be extended to a new user, subject to the approval by the city council. Number three, only conforming signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Number four, that no LED light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on this site, including but not limited to the building or around the windows. And number five, per Section 13 dot 13 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance, this approval is valid for one year from the date of approval by city council. Unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void after the one-year period.
Is there, I think you have another section to read.
Subject to the preceding conditions, this petition is approved for the following reasons. The proposed use complies with all of the general waiver use standards and requirements as provided under Sections 13 dot 13 and 6.53 of Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance as amended. The subject site can accommodate the proposed use, and the proposed use is compatible with and in harmony with the surrounding uses in the area.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Long. Is there support?
Support.
We have a motion made by Mr. Long to approve, supported by Mr. Bongero. Is there any discussion on the motion? If there's no discussion, please call the roll.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Bongero.
Aye.
Mrs. De Naro.
Aye.
Karen Magnos votes aye. Chairman Willschaw.
Votes aye. Motion passes. We'll go to city council with an approving recommendation, and we wish you, good luck, Mrs. Moore.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's a first.
That's, it is. It is very good. All right, folks, we're going to go on to item number two in our agenda. Mr. Secretary, please read what was number four as now number two.
Petition 2022-12-02-23 submitted by Individual Brewing Company LLC requesting waiver use approval under Section 6.09 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance as amended to operate a microbrewer license, including an on-premise tasting room, one-for-all brewery at 38083 Ann Arbor Road, located on the south side of Ann Arbor Road between West Chicago and Ann Arbor Trail in the northeast quarter of Section 31.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina.
Thank you. Again, this is a request to operate a microbrewery. This includes an on-premise tasting room. It's within the Ann Arbor Roads, or the Ann Arbor Crossroads Shopping Center, which is on Ann Arbor Road just south of Ann Arbor Trail. The zoning here is C1, local business. Brewers, microbrewers, brew pubs, and distilleries are all treated as waiver uses under Section 6.09 of the zoning ordinance. Ann Arbor Crossroads consists of three multi-tenant buildings. Total square footage is roughly 23,500 square feet of rentable building area. The shopping center can accommodate 15 to 16 tenants. Existing businesses include Sunny Valley Cleaners, Healthy Paws Vet Center, Little Caesar's, Livonia Trophy, and a Big B Coffee. This site is adjacent to a McDonald's restaurant, which is immediately to the north, Plymouth Woods Apartment, a complex to the east, and then the Washington Well Cleaners to the south. A microbrewer license allows for the production of beer. The beer can be sold to consumers for off-premise consumption, as well as to license wholesalers, and if the production is less than 1,000 barrels per year, the microbrewer can self-distribute to other retail licenses. Holders of a tasting room permit, beer can be sold to customers for on-premise consumption. One-for-all would occupy a 1,200-square-foot unit. This is in Building A, which is at the north end of the complex. Other tenants within this building include a So Moon Bowl and Sushi, as well as Livonia Trophy, and then Big B Coffee occupies the north end cap unit of that building. There are, so there are four tenants overall, about 5,000 square feet within this building. The floor plan shows how the space would be broken down, or what it would be broken down into. There would be three components, a tasting room, a cold room, as well as a brewery. Beer would be manufactured, as you would expect, in the brewery room, which is located at the rear of the unit. The cold room would be in the center, and then that's adjacent to the tasting room, so the taps would be installed through the wall from the cold room directly into the tasting room. There would be seating for 25 customers at this location. No food would be prepared on-site, but customers would be allowed to bring food in from elsewhere. The hours of operation would be from 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM, Wednesday through Saturday. The facility would be closed Sunday through Tuesday to allow for the brewing operations. There would be consideration for private rentals on those days that are scheduled to be closed, that'd be on a case-by-case basis. Parking for the shopping center required is 112 spaces. The center currently has 132, so parking is adequate to handle the proposed use. There is a special requirement under Section 6.09, and that is, is that this type of use cannot be located within 1,000 feet of any other such licensed establishment. There are no other on-premise licensed establishments within 1,000 feet. Another requirement is that it cannot be located within 400 feet of a church, school, or park, which it is not, so it complies with the special requirements in terms of separation. There would be no changes to the exterior of the building. The only thing would be signage, and that would be allowed at a ratio specified in the zoning ordinance.
So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to read out the correspondence. Yes, please.
Departments reporting, including Engineering, indicate that although no work is planned within the Ann Arbor Road right-of-way, any disturbances within the right-of-way will require the owner to obtain permits within, with the Michigan Department of Transportation. The parcel is currently served by Public Water Main and Sanitary Sewer, as well as privately-owned storm sewer, and based on the submitted drawings, there would be no impacts to the existing systems as a result of the proposed project, and that letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Fire Department reports in a letter dated January 10th that they have no objections to the proposal with the following stipulations. Provide specifics on processes and quantities produced, if applicable, and a further detailed plan review will take place when this division receives an official plan set. That letter is signed by Brian Kukla, Fire Marshal. We have a letter coming from the Traffic Division dated December 19th that reads, "I am concerned that there are not enough parking spaces, including spaces that are designated for the handicap to meet the needs of the business. The parking lot is already small, and it will be shared with several other businesses in this plaza. The need for additional parking spaces for both general parking and handicap parking is necessary, is a necessity that should be addressed with the proposed businesses." That letter is signed by Scott Shipansky, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. Next is a letter dated January 24th from the Inspection Department that reads, "The dumpster enclosure on this site has not been provided since the last waiver use approval on this site. The enclosure must meet the requirements set forth in Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance Section 10.03 subsection 8. Permits and inspections are required for the dumpster enclosure. Number two, signage has not been reviewed for this petitioner. All signage must meet the sign ordinance, or a Zoning Board of Appeals variance would be required, and three, permits and inspections will be required for the renovation of this space if this proposal moves forward. This department has no further objections to this petition." And that letter is signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. Next is a letter from the Department of Finance dated December 15th, and it reads, "I have reviewed the address connected with the above-noted petition. The following amounts are due to the City of Livonia. Unpaid water and sewer charges in the amount of $431.50." That letter is signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. Next is a letter coming from the Office of the Treasurer dated January 5th, indicating that they have no objections, as there are no taxes due. That letter is signed by Linda Shield, Treasurer of the City. And then lastly, we have a letter from, another second letter from the Division of Police dated January 9th that reads, "We reviewed the plans submitted by Individual Brewing Company LLC requesting waiver use approval pursuant to Section 6.09. After reviewing the plans with the Chief of Police, we have no objections to the waiver being granted contingent that the petitioner complies with all state laws, city ordinances, stipulations, and conditions set by the Livonia Police Department Liquor Investigation Unit as approved by the Chief of Police, stipulations and conditions set by the Traffic Bureau of the Livonia Police Department." And that letter is signed by Jeffrey Romaine, Special Services Bureau. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Any questions for our planning staff?
Chair.
Mr. Bongero.
Just one quick question. Mark, the unpaid water, was that from the previous tenant?
You know, I just noticed that the date on this letter is December 15th. The, that was due...
Back in August, it looks like, right?
Yeah, I don't have the answer. It does look like it was due in August, so maybe the petitioner can update us on that.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
I have not received a report back indicating that it was paid, though. So we can include that in a resolution.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bongero. Any other questions for our planning staff? If not, if our petitioners in the audience, please come forward. Good evening, sir.
Hi, good evening.
We'll start with your name and address for our record, please.
Joe Walters, 9262 Knowleson Street.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. And what would you like to tell us about your business?
First, I'm going to address, if you don't mind, the water bill. January 6th, I actually just looked at, the landlord sent me the receipt. He paid that bill. Anything additional, the, I mean, he read everything. There's definitely a lot more to it, so I could understand if there were more questions. I did want to mention, after last week, it was brought up to me about using the rear door as an entrance as well. I hadn't even considered it, really, and thinking about it over the last week, I don't think that that's a good idea, really, security-wise, so I probably won't be doing that. Other than that, I'll look into the dumpster issue as well, I suppose. It's a landlord issue, but...
Okay. There was also a question about the parking in the, for the center, if it would be adequate for your business. Do you have any comments on that or thoughts?
I thought the numbers that were read originally were sufficient, saying the parking was sufficient. I believe that's what was read last week, as well as this evening.
Mr. Toramina, does that seem consistent from what you've seen?
Well, based on the parking requirements in the ordinance, it does, it is adequate.
Right.
I think the concern expressed by the Police Department might have more to do with the layout of the parking lot in this particular part of the, of the site. As you can see, it's, parking might be limited, there are other restaurant users, but I think we discussed this at the study session, and that is, is the peak hours of operation likely for a one-for-all brewery will probably not coincide with the peak hours of operation with some of the other businesses.
Right.
In particular, the Big B Coffee.
Yes.
So we have not so much concern about that. It's a convenience issue, as much, you know, not really a parking number issue, if you will.
Okay, all right. Thank you, appreciate that. Anything else you would like to tell us about the business in terms of the history or what you're going to do there?
Well, the history is basically, I was the original founding owner and brewer for Liberty Street Brewing in Plymouth with five other partners, and it was a bigger, much bigger facility. We did very well. We even did statewide distribution and had a separate production facility in Livonia. That's when, like, the kind of a mistake was, it kind of got oversaturated with everybody packaging and getting on the shelf, and what I'm basically doing is, what I've realized is the correct way to do this business is by myself, alone, small, stay small, keep it easy, simple, by myself kind of a thing. So that's why there's the limited number of days, only open four days, but that can change if, you know, probably Sundays for football, for instance. But that's the whole idea, is I'm trying to get back into the industry that I love, doing what I'm passionate about, and this is just the beginning steps for it, so.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Walters. Let's see if there's any questions for you. Any questions from our commission?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen Magnos.
Two items for me. I'm glad you decided to not use that back door when I drove through there.
Yeah.
It just didn't seem like a good idea with the drive-through traffic coming through there, and you're bound to have trouble there eventually.
Sure.
Second question is, how much work have you got to do, and what could you open?
Every brewery that I've been involved with, I always tell the people, it's going to take you twice as long as you think it is, and you're never going to have enough money. So they're typically six months to eight months if you're really, you know, hitting all the paperwork targets, because it's federal licensing, it's state licensing, it's Health Department, and city, and all the local stuff. So I mean, it's a lot of bureaucratic to get through, too, and any delays you have there, I mean, you know, I would hope six months, within six months after signing a lease. So it's not a lot of work. It's, the demolition is a little bit, you know, a little bit of work, and the floor plan's pretty simple, too, so it shouldn't take that, take too long to have the physical part of it ready to open.
So six to eight months, you think you'll be ready to rock and roll?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Karen Magnos. Any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bongero.
Mr. Walters, so is it, are you handling the dumpster enclosure or your landlord?
It's a landlord option. It's in the lease.
It's going to be a new one? Is that what they're looking for?
I think the dumpster is in good shape. It's not, it's not enclosed, I believe, currently.
Yeah, so the...
Yeah, so the enclosure was not built to the standard that was required when the resolution was approved for the Big B Coffee. There was fencing used instead of masonry, and so we're working with the landlord right now to, to correct that issue.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Toramina, Mr. Bonjero.
Okay, satisfied with that. Thank you.
Yep. All right. Any other questions for our petitioner? I don't see any other questions from any of the commissioners. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this petition? If so, you're welcome to come forward. I don't see anyone coming forward to speak to this. Is there anything else that you'd like to tell us, Mr. Walters, before we make our decision?
Oh, no, just thank you for putting us up in front. Thank you very much. Very much.
You're, you're certainly welcome. With that, I will close the public hearing, and the motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Long, or Bonjero, excuse me.
Bonjero.
Mr. Bonjero.
I'd like to make an approving resolution that the request for operator of micro brewery and tasting room, one-for-all brewery at 38083 Ann Arbor Road, is approved based on a determination that it complies with all of the special and general waiver use standards and requirements provided under section 6.09 and 13.13 of Livonia Vision zoning ordinance. This approval is subject to city council approval in the following conditions. Number one, waiver use applies only to the operation of a micro brewery. Authorization to operate any other type of liquor license, including but not limited to, a Class C tavern or clubhouse, like, club license shall require city council approval. Number two, customer seating in the tasting room should be limited to twenty-five. Hours of operation in business is allowed to be open to the public, or for private events is limited from ten a.m. to ten p.m. Number four, only conforming signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the zoning board of appeals. Number five, no LED light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on the site, including the building or around the windows. Number six, unless approved by the proper local authority, any type of exterior advertising such as promotional flags, streamers, or sponsored vehicles designed to attract the attention of passing motorists is prohibited. And, number seven, per section 13.13 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance, this approval is valid for one year from the date of approval by the city council. Unless the building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void after a one-year period.
Is there support?
Support.
I, I heard Mr. Kara Magna on that one. Mr. Long, I heard you start, but you didn't get it all out.
I'm gonna share the score sheet.
All right. We have a motion to approve made by Mr. Bonjero, supported by Mr. Kara Magna. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, if the secretary's ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Bonjero.
Aye.
Kara Magna says aye, and Mrs. Dinaro.
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Chairman Wilshaw?
Votes aye, motion passes. We'll go to city council and approving the recommendation. Good luck.
Thank you.
And with that, we move to item number one on our agenda, which I think a few people are here for.
Petition 2022-12-01-02 submitted by Basilica of St. Mary under sections 13.13 and 13.15 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance as amended, requesting to rezone parts of the properties at 18100 Merriman Road and 30600 Brookview Drive, located on the east side of Merriman Road between Mayville and Seven Mile Road in the northwest quarter of section eleven, from public lands to N2 Neighborhood and NM3 multifamily neighborhood, maximum four stories.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request to rezone portions of the Basilica of St. Mary property, which is located on Merriman Road. The purpose of the rezoning is to construct a one-story educational academy and a three-story senior apartment building. The land owned by St. Mary's totals roughly 21.3 acres and is currently divided into three zoning classifications. The front part of the property, which is about 8.7 acres, including the Basilica and the Cultural Center, is zoned RUF Rural Urban Farm and N2 One Family Residential. The remaining 12.6 acres, which mostly includes the easterly part of the site and the land previously owned by Livonia Public Schools, are zoned PL Public Lands. Ordering the site to the north are residential properties on Bainbridge and Sunset Streets, as well as public park land, including Bainbridge Park and Beverly Park. Traversing these properties is a tributary of the Bell Branch, which is part of the Upper Rouge River, and which mostly is undeveloped and contains floodplain. To the east are single-family homes that are part of the Sunset Park subdivision, and then to the south is the remaining portion of the Bryant School property, which is still owned by Livonia Public Schools. Of the roughly 12.6 acres of public land-zoned property owned by St. Mary's, the proposed zoning changes would affect 9.2 acres. And of this, roughly 2.96 acres, or a third of the area, would be rezoned to Neighborhood Two for the academy, and then the remaining two-thirds, or 6.24 acres, would be rezoned to Neighborhood Multifamily Three Roman numeral one, and that would be for the apartment building. 3.4 acres located at the far east end of the site would remain under the public land zoning designation. So looking at the N2 rezoning, the proposed expansion of the N2 district follows the outer edge of the parking lot at the rear of the Basilica and the Cultural Center. It also includes a narrow strip along the south side of the property, which is adjacent to the Cultural Center. Educational uses are treated as a permitted use in the Neighborhood Two district. The academy, as shown, would be about 35,000 square feet, and it would be located 150 feet east of the Cultural Center. It would encompass a portion of the former school property, as well as a portion of the existing parking lot located behind the Cultural Center. The building would be one level and a maximum height of thirty-six feet. There's a preliminary floor plan that was submitted with the application. It shows that the building would contain multiple classrooms, as well as multipurpose rooms, a gymnasium that would have bleachers and a stage, locker rooms, restrooms, storage, mechanical rooms, and then several offices. Looking at the proposed Neighborhood Multifamily Three Roman numeral one district, that extends east of the proposed academy and gymnasium for a distance of roughly 723 feet. The NM3 zoning is intended primarily for condominium multiple families housing, as well as senior housing. NM3 by itself allows for buildings up to two stories in height. The requested NM3 Roman numeral one classification would increase the allowable building height to four stories. The preliminary plans show one building, three stories in height, positioned in the south-central portion of the area proposed to be rezoned. That's this location here. Overall, building dimensions would equal 75 feet by 435 feet, the maximum building height, forty-eight feet, each floor containing roughly 32,625 square feet, so the gross floor area of the building would be 97,875 square feet. This would accommodate total of 28 apartments, each on the first and second levels of the building, 30 apartment units on the third floor, for a total of 86 units. Materials on the building would include a combination of brick block, as well as hardy plate. This is all very early in the design stages. Parking details have not been reviewed at this time, and I'll note once again that the easterly 3.4 acres identified on the plans as parcel two would remain undeveloped and under the public land zoning classification. The master plan designates the portions of the property that would be rezoned as floodplain area and parks and community. The hundred-year flood hazard area extends across the northern edge of the site, and the parks and community classification reflects Livonia Public Schools' previous use and ownership of the property. And I have several other slides that we can show as the, as the meeting progresses, but with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to read out the, the two items of correspondence, or three items of correspondence on this issue.
Yes, please.
First is a letter from our Engineering Division. It's a letter dated December nineteenth. That reads, "The legal descriptions included with the submitted drawings appear to have a small error on the description of the area to be rezoned from PL to N2. On the rezoning sketch drawing, the last dimension of the description should be 172 feet, not 192 feet. Also, the description of, for the original parcel two is missing a bearing and distance for the easterly leg of the parcel where the parcels of Brookview Drive on all the sheets. The existing parcel is currently serviced by Public Water, Maintenance, Sanitary Sewer, and Storm Sewer. The submitted drawing do not indicate any of the proposed utility connections or calculations, so we are unable to comment on impacts to the existing systems until design calculations are provided during the design and permitting submittals. The proposed drawings do not indicate any stormwater detention, which will be required in order to meet the Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance. Also, the drawings do not indicate the limits of the existing floodplain and wetlands, which will need to be located prior to engineering approvals. It should be noted that any work within the Merriman Road right-of-way will require owner, the owner, to obtain permits from, with Wayne County Department of Public Service." That letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next is a letter of no objection coming from the Treasurer's Office dated January fifth, as well as a letter of no objection from the Department of Finance dated December nineteenth, signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. And, Mr. Chairman, I'll note that we received somewhere in the order of sixty letters. The Planning Commission has a copy of all of those letters that have been received up until, I think, 4:30 p.m. today.
Correct, yes, thank you. We do have many emails and letters that were received, so those are all on file. We've had a chance to read through those, and they will also become part of the permanent record for this, this item, so we appreciate that from everyone who's contacted us. Is there any questions of any of the commissioners of our planning staff? I don't see any questions. Before we get started, I do want to try to prompt our audience through this process, because there are a lot of people in the audience, and this may be a new process to some of you. Many of you attended our study meeting last week and may have heard some of this same speech before, but I wanna just give it again for anyone who isn't familiar with how this process works. What we have before us tonight is a rezoning request. The purpose of this meeting tonight is to look at the zoning of the property and decide if the change that's been requested from PL to N2 and NM31 is something that we approve of or not in terms of making a recommendation to our city council. So we're gonna have discussion that's gonna be mostly focused on the zoning of the property and the use of the property. We're not gonna get into the details of the appearance of the buildings, the layout of the buildings, the materials, where the parking lot's located, those types of things, because that comes in a second process called a site plan. So what we're gonna do tonight is talk about zoning. We're gonna make a recommendation of either approving or denying that rezoning request, and it may be a modified request, it may be the original request, we'll, we'll see how things go. That will then be moved on to city council with our recommendation of either approving or denying that. Once it gets to city council, they will have that same process to go through and make the final decision on the zoning. That then starts a process, as that is happening, of the site plan. And then the petitioner will have to come back to us again with a site plan for this site, and that's where all those details of the building and the materials and the parking and the layout will be discussed and decided, and usually that process involves a lot of modification and iterations until we get to a product that is either accepted or not. Again, we'll make a recommendation on that site plan, which will then go to city council, and the city council will make the final decision on that petition. So there's several meetings that are gonna take place. If you've never been through one of these before, I'm talking at least four meetings in the sense of our meeting tonight for zoning, a meeting for city council, and then it's gonna go to site plan for us, and then site plan for city council. So that's the basic process, if anyone hasn't been through this and wants to understand what's going on. And we're gonna try to focus our discussion tonight on zoning, because that's what we have before us. So with that, I'm gonna ask that the petitioner start, and we're going to hear from them about their petition, and we all have some questions, and then we'll give everyone else a chance to talk. Good evening, Father George.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As I stand before you today, and I'd like to inform you, I am the pastor and founder of St. Mary's Orthodox Basilica, started 1972 on the farm of McCannell Land. We came here tonight to ask for a zoning approval, so our church community and our neighborhood will grow to accommodate children in a Montessori school, in a family and youth center, and also a place to house our elderly. We're not building nursing home, we're not building an assisted living. We are building a three-stories building. That's what the land can take. We don't have any more land. The school is still on, I think, thirty-some acres, and we are here to work with the city and with the board, and whatever it will make us and our neighborhood are happy. If you have any question for me, I'm willing to answer, but I've been in this, in this room so many times to always ask for permission, and we will not violate. Whether you approve our zoning, we will come back, and if you don't approve our zoning, we will also come back, because we wanna make sure that we still are on Merriman Road. Our congregation is, is growing, we're one of the largest churches growing in the City of Livonia. And as you see, the Basilica stand there, it's one of its kind in America. We have a wonderful conversation with our neighbor yesterday, and we will not violate anyone's rules or orders. A citizen is someone who loves not only himself, but their neighborhood, and if we are to preach anything, we are to love our neighbor, and we work for our neighbor.
Thank you, Father George. Is there an additional presentation that you'd like to make?
Yes.
That's our architect.
Okay, can I get your name and address for...
Yeah, my name is Gassane Abdou from JV Associates Architect at 24001 Ocean Lake Farmington, Michigan.
All right, thank you, sir.
I just wanna, just to start with thanking the Planning Department and for helping us through that process. I mean, Mr. Toramina was helping us through coming, submitting all these drawings, give us the advice to see where we're going with this project, and going through the whole steps for this project. I just wanna add a little bit about some of the meetings, what we had yesterday with the neighbors, with the board, and Father George, and Father Jim, and a lot of questions were asked in this meeting. I mean, everybody was asking about the environment. Are we touching any trees? Are we touching any floodplain? Are we touching any wetland? There was other issues, the height of the building. Are we doing four-story or are we doing three-story? There was different issues about circulations and patterns for the site, and what about engineering, and about some water, where the drainage is going. I'd just like to kind of give some, we didn't start with this study yet, but we are, I mean, I worked with the City of Livonia, maybe with over forty projects, so we know that the, the City of Livonia is not gonna give us any permit unless we meet all the codes, the requirements for the county, for the city, and for the state. So once, the reason why we didn't have our civil drawings done, because in rezoning, they're not required, that's why we didn't submit them. But definitely, like you said, in the Planning Commission, when we come in front of you for the Planning Commission, and I'm a member of the Planning Commission in West Bloomfield for thirteen years, so I know what is needed, what's required, and how we're gonna make the city happy, and our board, and especially our neighbors, that we wanna tell them that this project is to meet all the codes and requirements, what the city tells us, and there is no permit gonna be taken unless all these permits are approved, and we meet with the requirements of the whole neighborhood and the city. And just to kind of give you a little bit idea about the way we designed the site plan, we're not talking about planning commissions and site plan approval right now, but we like to say that we're trying to stay away from any wetland, from any floodplain, and from any environmental issues in the design that you saw on the site plan. And some, some questions came out. Are you doing underground detention or above-ground detention? We like to work with the, with the... We like to work with the, with the city and the neighbors. Originally, we thought that above-ground detention is good, it's a nice water, that it's good, you mean, nice space is better environmentally. But if the neighbors think that we do have issues with above-ground detention, I talked to Father George and the board, and they said, even if we have to do underground detention and make the neighbors happy, we're going to work with it. So we are here, actually, what I'm trying to say, we're trying to work with the neighbors, we're trying to work with the city, and we're trying to make everybody happy in the process. It's a church been there for fifty years, and I think, I hope, it's going to be for another hundred. And most of the, a lot of the people who goes to that church, they, they live in Livonia. I mean, we love Livonia, we work with Livonia, and Mark has been friend for so long that he helped us through the process of different projects, and hopefully, we're going to do the same thing in this one, and we want to make sure that whatever you ask us to do, we're willing to work around our projects. Any advice you give us to make it happen, we're willing to work with you and make this process going in the right direction. And if you have any questions, please ask me, and I'll answer any.
Thank you for the information on the meeting that you had with the residents yesterday, that's helpful to convey that, and we'll see if there's any questions for you. Is there any questions from any of our commissioners on this project?
Chair.
Mr. Bonjero.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I was able to attend the meeting last night, and I thought Father George and his team did a great job. It's a shame that not everybody could be there, because it was a good chance to get some one-on-one, and they made it a good, they made a very good point to address anybody's questions. Some people had multiple questions, concerns, and they did answer them the best they could, and if they didn't know the answer, they, they promised they'd get answers. So it was good, it was really very good, appreciate you doing that. My only question was, on the retirement building, have you considered going two stories? I know it's going to take more of the footprint, but...
Can I answer like a little bit of that question? The reason why we started with this building, and we do have some elevation already drawn for the, for the building, and if we go to the midpoint of the roof, it's only around thirty-eight feet, and typically, I don't know if Mark can help us, in regular houses, usually the midpoint, you can't exceed thirty-five, so really, we're only missing with three feet, and if you put it, the, the building next to a regular house. So we're trying to work, and we can work with the pitches of the roof, and we can make it look, meet as requirement as we can. But let me go back to the two-story. The two-story, if we do two-story, we're going to have, end up pushing the building a little bit further, I think to the east, and we're trying to stay within the area we're working with. Our setback now, from the building to the property line is five hundred, I think, twenty, to the nearest house on the east side is six hundred fifty feet. And if you go to the south side, north side, we're the closest, to the closest house, we're around four hundred sixty, and to the property line, we're, we're two hundred twenty feet. So we're trying to make the project a little bit more compacted, closer to the building, closer to the church, and not, because the minute we go with two-story, I'm going to be extending a lot more, because that's the reason really why we went and we did the two-story, trying to kind of save the property, have more green area on the site, and trying to make the project a little bit more compacted. Really, that's how the whole thing started.
Yeah, I understand that. With the Montessori school, I think that's what you planned, what are the ages for that school?
The Montessori school is one to five years old, and we have all parishioners and non-parishioners that attend this school.
And I think you also said in the meeting that anybody can use the gymnasium.
Yes. The gymnasium came to be, many years ago, when we attend many public hearings, the public school was in dire need. We do host all public school sport activity in our cultural center. It's almost as a, a good neighbor, and they, they are in need of a gymnasium. We have our use, and if the city, any, any school would like to use it, it's more than welcome to use it. We don't have anything that is forbidden to use from anyone.
And the same go, applies for the retirement.
Yes.
So timing-wise, I think I heard you last night, you're thinking three years from now?
It depend, the, the process takes a long time. As, as we get the zoning, then we have to move to the second step, then the third steps, and this is will be all private funding from the church, from the parishioners. We have people who already pledged the money, because they want to see their parents there, the neighborhood is there, the children is there, the school, the church is there. Things are changing a lot in our society, and we would like to maintain some kind of semblance to keep the family. So it might be two and a half years, three years. We might begin building the school first and the family and youth center, but as we prepare for the soft cost, maybe we can do it all together.
I think you were projecting thirty million?
Twenty-five to thirty million.
Okay, and you think it's going to take two, three years to raise that?
No, we already have pledges close to ten million, and the bank promised that when we have at least twenty percent of the fund, they, we will begin the, we're not going to raise all. Churches don't pay their mortgage right away. Churches in, in the long-range plan, we're not in business, so if, we will do whatever it takes to make it easy, so that we have few banks who said, we will fund the, the project, we need maybe fifteen, twenty percent down.
Okay, so depending how this goes tonight, if you got approval, how, you're going to get immediately working on the site plan, architectural round rings, so everybody here can get a chance to see them, right?
Absolutely. It's the, it's our neighborhood.
Okay.
And it's, it's my neighbor, and I've, I've been there fifty-one years, when Merriman was one lane.
Thanks, Father.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonjero. Any other questions for petitioner, Ms. Wa, Ms. Deniro?
Can you, can you tell us a little bit more about that? What is your plan to engage the community? If zoning is approved tonight, what plans do you have to engage the community in?
I, I want to apologize for one thing. I meant to engage the community six months ago, but I'm getting old, and I'm sick, and we had so many interruption, we lost so many people who died with the COVID, the deacon, many of the founders of this church. But whatever you advise us to meet on a monthly basis, I am, the church is open. This is not the first time that the community came. When the school system was going through all this change, our facility was open for the public to meet with no charge. We give them refreshment, no entertainment, but refreshment and coffee. So our place is open to meet anytime, whatever it takes. No one should live in a place feel unwanted. This is our neighborhood, and they are all wanted. So the next step, before we go to the city council, we will have another meeting. As I told them yesterday, we didn't have all the answer, you know, how was, the floodplain's going to be, and, and if we're going to charge for counseling or not. But once this process move, we, we will find the answer together.
Any other questions, Ms. Deniro?
That's it for me.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from any of our other commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Care Magna.
Well, good evening. Tell me how this comes together, where we, where you want to do a, the Montessori as well as the, the multifamily housing. How, who makes that decision? Is there a board at the church? Who makes that decision? And how many people are on the board that, that?
We have a parish council that has eighteen, we have the members, the chairman, the treasurer, and we have a Mariam Centers Committee that's made out of business people in the community, in the church, and we have, they are set up. So we came with this plan to answer the need of our church community in our neighborhood. We have, every day, people call, they said, you know, my, my mother is looking for a place to live. Can we, is there a place for rent? What would we do with our parents? We're not a throwaway society. And then also to have the Montessori school with the family and youth center, the family youth center will be for the family of Livonia. If you go to the court in Livonia, you find judges sometimes, and, and they have no place to send people if they need marriage counseling. So it came up to be a perfect package. Now, how it's going to be, what's the charge? Somebody ask us for a sign? We've never had any sign. We don't advertise. It's a, it's a, it's a word of mouth from, if somebody need a place to live, somebody, and fit, and, and, and meet all the criteria, fifty-five years and older, it's not for use to live in that place.
So, so with this board that you've got together and, and a group of leaders in the church, how do you come up with close to ninety, the need for close to ninety units?
Eighty-six unit.
Eighty-six, close to ninety.
It's only because what, this is what the architect said, that is what the land can ex, take, the space.
So what is, what is the demand? Where's, where's the demand for eighty-six?
We have.
Eighty-six units?
I have already seventy widows in our church.
How many? One, seven, or seven?
Seventy unit, seventy widows. The founders of our church, those who own all the, the businesses in Livonia, many years ago, they're, they're dying out. I was the youngest member of that community fifty-one years ago, now I am the oldest. So it is the need, and wherever you, you need, you read about the need for place for senior housing.
So, so the need i- is based upon your, your math of the seventy widows, or the architect that you said, said you can build seven, or eighty-six units on this property? Which, which is it, one or the other?
Really, it's both. It is what we can accompany and what we can accommodate, because we don't have the land. If, if Livonia Board of Education will sell us more land, that will be even great.
You're, you're, you're getting into my next question now, so thank you. So you're, so you're ma, max, trying to maximize the density?
Maximize the use.
Of this property, and, and I think that's why?
Yeah.
Many people are here tonight, but the concern would be, and my, and my thinking, that it's, it's oversaturation of housing on that, on that piece of property surrounded by residential land. Now, 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 come on up. But let's go back to what you were saying, if they'd sell you more property, are, are you saying that you'd, you'd petition to put up another apartment there?
No, but we will have maybe a different space. We don't, we will have more space for gardening, more space for a, more space?
Folks, please, please.
For the cultural, more space for education, more space, we, we are locked in. There's one way you will go in into our property and our Mariam Center, and there is no exit anywhere else except our property.
I'm familiar with that, thank you. I, I would, we'll listen to some more, but I, I would tell you that I'd be more supportive of a single-story, more of a neighborhood network there, even if you had to have more property, and perhaps the math doesn't work for that, and that's probably why you're going up, but?
Yes, sir.
That's kind of where I'm at now. But tha- that's the question I had.
Thank you.
One other question, I may as well get this out now. What will be, what would, what would prevent the church and the board from building this apartment and then selling it later to an apartment management company, and then the church wipes their hands of it, it has nothing to do with it? What would, what would prevent that?
Our constitution in the church prevents selling any church property, and to give it to, to sell the apartment, that will be in violation of our constitution. We want to maintain, to serve the community, not only one year, two years, but as long as we are in, this life exists.
Okay, so you have a constitution that prevents you from ever selling any?
Absolutely.
Any portion of the church property?
Right. Yeah, we, we are not in business to invest. We are in business to serve the public and serve our parishioners.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Care Magna. Any other questions, Mr. Long?
Thank you. So as you reviewed the demand for this, you know, you talked about seventy widows that you have and people within your, your parish. I- is there some kind of preference that would be given to, to current members for this facility, or is it just first come, first served?
First comes, first served.
Okay. What percentage of your, of your flock is Livonia residents? Do you know that?
It says maybe fifty percent of our parishioners live in Livonia, and they have businesses in Livonia.
Okay. And then you, you, you want to do the school as well, and, and that's what's in front of us, is both. Have you considered doing one, or, you, do we need to take both at the same time if we, you know, are they, do you need both in order to make this work? How, can you talk about that?
If you address the issue totally, it makes for a better plan for the future, so at least me, my parishioners, and the community are assured what's going to happen. According to the plan of the city, nothing can violate the ordinance of the city. So cost, we, we might start building the school and the Mariam, and, and the family and youth center, and maybe in, in the last stage, after two, three years, to build the, the housing. It's all depend about the approval. As I said, we will, we are not going anywhere. This is our home. Everybody should understand that. This is our home, our base. We've been here, we're the oldest, one of the oldest churches in Livonia, and we are one of the gro, most growing churches in Livonia. We feed the hungry, we close the naked, we raise fund for the poor, so it's not only about us, it's about our society.
The, I guess the last question that I have for now, and I think I want to hear what a lot of the people have to say, or what all the people have to say, they want to speak, but you mentioned to Mr. Care Magna that it's in the church constitution that you cannot sell this property.
Yes.
But just kind of playing that forward, if hard times came along, I mean, what, what does that, what does that mean? I mean, would, would, if, if the church were to ever fail, then, then what happens then?
Our church, historically in America, never failed. Business failed, family failed, but the church never fell. God in its midst, and it will not be shaken. We could have moved to Salem Township, but we are where our parishioners at, and that's why we are successful. The greatest danger in the world is misinformation and labeling people, and this is something we do not want to cross. We want to be within the law of what our right and our neighbors' right without violating anyone. The church cannot sell any property. Historically, if you look in the last fifty years, there is not one Orthodox church that was sold. And even though the neighborhood changed, people move away, but they still come back to their church.
Okay.
Thank you.
But I, I appreciate that, I guess, you know, I, I've seen, the church that I attended as a youth in Detroit growing up, right, that, that stayed in there, the neighborhood turned over, and there was a lot of different people that moved in, and the church went on for a while, but then eventually, it sold, it wasn't attracting to the, to the people who were living there anymore. And so that's kind of my concern, and I understand your point, though, and I agree with you, that the church doesn't fail, the business fails, but I just trying to play that forward and envision how this unwinds.
One of the reason that you're building this school? One of the reason that you're building this school and the family and youth center and a place for the senior is to keep the church alive and the neighborhood alive. If people moved away, things will die out. Do we need to repeat what other did? For 51 years, we came to this body, and we worked with the city government about everything we, we did and we will do to keep our family and our neighborhood intact. If people moved away and there's no need that to visit my mother and to have my child in the daycare, or to have my family and youth center for even a sport event, yeah, people will go away. But we're not going away.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Char.
Thank you, Mr. Long.
Just one quick follow-up. I think to Mr. Long's point, or you, I think, so it's, you would not consider going for one zoning for the school and a later date coming back for the retirement building? I guess that's what kind of what the question was.
I mean, it does, what difference does it make? We are, we keep our word, and we keep our promise, and we're working with you. So what difference does it make? It makes it easy for us to have a master plan. If you have a master plan, you know where you're going.
Maybe you just kind of start with one, see how it goes?
Well, the building, we will start with one. We're not building everything in one time. But I would appeal to you that the zoning has to be for everyone, for everything. But it's all up to you.
No, it's not up to me, but. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pongero. Any other questions from our commissioners? To our petitioner? If not, I do have a couple of brief questions. I generally don't ask a lot of questions for those in our audience who don't normally watch our meetings because I'm supposed to be running the meeting. But I do have a couple of brief questions that are more procedural. And it really is a, a spin-off of some of the questions that you've already heard. I just want to make sure the, 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 the school itself, the Montessori, is there gonna be any limitations on who can attend that school?
Absolutely not.
Okay. And will that school be run by the church, or will it be run by an independent?
No, it's running by a committee in the church. We have a St. Mary's Academy's Board of Director, and they are the one, our, the principal of it is the parishioners who specialize in education, approved by the state and the city. And so it's not leased out or anything else.
So the educators will be employees of the, the, the school through the church?
The principal and the director are member of the church. But we do have other teacher who are not member of our church.
Okay, they're just gonna be employees?
And they work with us, yes.
Okay. And similarly with the, the independent living facility, I heard, it sounds like it's gonna be the same criteria. There's, the only limitation is gonna be 55 and older?
Yes.
No other limitations on income or any other?
No, because it's private and it's not a public funding. It's private funding. It's not a Section 8 building. It is, you submit an application to the management, and if you meet all the criteria and you pay the rent, you're in.
Okay. And, and similarly, the independent living facility will, will be a property of the church? It will stay a property of the church, and the employees who work there will be employed by the church?
Well, we have always, the principal director will be from the church because every one of these building has its own committee. I cannot run and be there for every committee, but the, the Maryam Center Committee, they will have to, we will have to hire a management company that understand. I have enough problem hearing people complaining about my sermon, let alone dealing with rentals and collect the rent.
Right, right. I understand. Thank you, Father George. With that, I think we've exhausted all the questions from the commission. So this is the opportunity for people in our audience who wish to speak for or against this petition to come forward. Because there are so many people, and I know there's gonna be so much interest in speaking, I do have a few rules that I would like to set for this evening so that we can make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to speak. Starting with the fact that obviously we'd ask that everyone, please be respectful of everyone else's views. I appreciate the, the results so far tonight at the meeting. People have been very good at listening to our petitioner and respecting his views. I would ask that they will do the same for you and listen to your views and respect those. I would not like to hear any heckling from the audience or any comments being made from the audience out loud because those will not be picked up by our microphones and can also slow the meeting down. We're gonna ask that residents' comments be limited to two minutes so that we give everybody an opportunity to come up and speak and not be here until 11:00 or 12:00 at night. If you have a particular person that is a representative of the community or a subdivision group or something like that that wants to come forward and give a more in-depth presentation or has something prepared, we're willing to extend that for those people, obviously. Let's see, what else do we have? You can come to either podium to speak. We'll ask that our petitioner sit down for this time.
You want me to stay here, sir?
You can sit down for now, and we'll listen to the residents. And for the residents who have never spoke here before, we ask that you please address us and not the audience because the meeting is for our purposes tonight. We want to hear what you have to say. Any questions that you ask, please ask them of us. And anything that is asked, we will, the petitioner will be listening to those questions. And when they, when we're done with hearing from all the residents, we'll have an opportunity for the petitioner to come back up and address some of those questions. And yes, definitely, everyone, please start with your name and address so we can attribute your name, your comments to the record.
Yes, thank you. My name is Steve Johnson. I live at 18240 Sunset Street. Our family lives adjacent to the north of this property. Our property line is gonna be 200 feet away from this apartment back here. I purchased the home and our property from my father's estate about 15 years ago. Immediately after that, after I moved in, I started hearing loud sounds that I located was the St. Mary's Cultural Center. From their website, it says St. Mary's was built and opened for business in the fall of 1991. We can accommodate a group from 500 or 50 to 500 people. We are a full-service banquet hall. This building is clearly not used for church purposes exclusively. A number of folks here tonight have been to different events, and they have no affiliation with the church. And yet, it is not zoned commercial. As other banquet halls in the city are, it appears to be zoned RUF, rural urban farm. And it certainly is not located in a commercial area as other banquet halls are required to in the city of Livonia. I have given the Planning Commission tonight an article by Brad Newman from the Michigan State University entitled "How to Spot a Spot Zoning." It explains how spot zoning is illegal. Although public land to N2 neighborhood where the school would be may not meet the four criteria required to be identified as spot zoning, public land to NM31 neighborhood multifamily up to four stories clearly fits the definition of spot zoning in this case. Perhaps this is why the Planning Director, Taramina, last week, when asked about going from public lands to this four-story, said that he could not recall any other instances in the city.
Mr. Johnson, the two minutes is up if you could summarize, please?
Okay. As of today, there are over 450 persons who have signed an online petition against this rezoning. If the property remains public lands, we would like to work with the St. Mary's to turn this beautiful area into a nature preserve and leave a legacy for our children and our grandchildren because the future is now.
Thank you. Thank you very much, sir. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name's Amelia Vilke. I'm at 31716 Curtis. I'm also an architectural designer, so I know my way around these things. In Livonia, there's approximately 16, well, assisted living and living senior residences, which include independents. So there really is no need for an additional independent senior living facility. Also, I really questioned having an, a separate building for gym and a Montessori school when other churches have a culture center that includes banquet halls, classrooms, and gyms, such as my church in Southfield. And how doing that would save the church money, which right now they proposed $30 million for their plan. It's an unnecessary amount that they don't have at the moment, and there's other ways around this.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Hello. I'm Colleen Badger. I live at 17415 Sunset Street. And it's about a five-house trek towards the field where this is being proposed.
Okay.
This land that was purchased over the years by St. Mary's is, serves a vital environmental and quality of life functions for us in its current natural state. It's a low elevation area of land that collects and absorbs a significant amount of water from precipitation. As we discussed earlier, there's a portion that is floodplain designated. And with increasing storm patterns and heavy rains in recent years, building a large structure and impermeable parking lot surfaces would gravely affect the stormwater management in this area. The loss of open land with native plant species growing and absorbing the water will cause runoff to the remaining school-owned land and surrounding neighborhood. The outline of whatever water retention system is in place doesn't appear to be accommodated in the scope of these plans that have been presented so far. So flooded yards and basements place residents at risk for quality of life, financial, and health problems down the road. Sending the water to the creek isn't a great solution either because this creek already has levels of chloride, AKA road salt, that are considered toxic to aquatic life. The stream quality has a rating of very poor from samples analyzed by the Friends of the Rouge organization. So adding more salt and chemicals and other pollution by bringing this many people and their cars and their waste into this environment is gonna create further damage to this water system. We need to be reversing damage, not adding more, in my opinion. My biggest concern is the zoning to the N3. N2 for the community center, I can see how that fits in the master plan and in this neighborhood, but the housing is not compatible with the surrounding neighborhood as outlined in the master plan. So that's all I have to say. My daughter is here and would like to present, if that's okay?
She is welcome to.
She has the same address as me.
Very good, thank you.
Do not take our meadow. First, me and my friends absolutely love riding our bikes there. Second, you'd be practically taking many children's happy place. Third, I wouldn't feel safe walking to school by big buildings and parking lots with lots of people, where it used to feel like the safest place in the world to me. Fourth, people's backyards could be flooded because when it rains, huge puddles form there. But when you build buildings there, there would be no room for those puddles. So they would be forced away into other people's backyards, and, and they will start to flood. I may be a kid, but I'm more powerful than you think. And I care about the future. I love playing in nature, and I hope that one day my kids will have places like this to explore and play. Please don't approve the rezoning so the land can be protected once again. Do not take our meadow.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Hello, Kevin Skyless, 30528 Janine Street. I have some questions. I also wrote a letter in opposition. So questions for the commission?
Yes.
How does this not constitute spot zoning? And if so, is spot zoning considered an acceptable practice for zoning in Livonia? Secondly, what safeguards are there to ensure that the senior residents will be used exclusively for seniors? How does this align, a further question? How does this align with the Livonia Vision 21 Master Plan? And then if there's no precedent for this, which seems was established last week, then how can you assess the impact on the neighboring communities? And then maybe more of a question for the petitioner, but why should the neighboring communities believe that you'll engage with us when the first meeting with the community was after you had already submitted the petition?
Thank you, Mr. Skylers. Is there anyone on this side wishing to speak? I want to try to alternate. Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Margaret Rudis. I live at 31038 Mayville, and our backyard faces the field. We've been there 31 years. And I also want to address the concern with flooding. Some years back, the school had done some resurfacing with some dirt in the backyard, and it really worsened the flooding that we already, we get some soggy grass. We've learned to live with it over 30 years rainy seasons. But they did a small change with some dirt out there, and it was like, wow, this is the worst flooding we've ever had. And the butterfly effect, I can only imagine that what they would be doing with parking lots and all that, that yes, it would have an impact on flooding in my backyard and all of the surrounding areas. Also, lighting. They built that garage for storage back there, and it's just this spotlight. We practically can see a shadow standing in our living room. I'm not, I'm not making that up. If you're standing there, the lights are out. It's so bright. If they do do this, concerns about lighting, aim things downward, you know, traffic, all the other things. But the letter that was read at the beginning had me nodding my head that, yeah, because they said about the, the water and the flooding and all that, that first letter that was read. I guess I'm done. I just wanted to throw in my two cents of that, yeah, we're really, really concerned about this and that it hasn't been addressed, the water and all the other issues. And also, if there is approval, I love the idea of maybe start with the school. Do you have to approve the whole thing? See how that part goes, the, the school and the gym? That's more reasonable than the whole thing all at once. So please, if you are gonna approve this, maybe just do the first part, and then maybe down the road, they could come back and ask for the other part. Sounds reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Emil Ajluni, and I live in Farmington Hills, and I hope that that will allow me to speak.
You're welcome to speak.
I want to address the fact that Father George talked about is the community and how we support our church and how we want to live and grow in the future. I married a young lady from Livonia, Churchill High School. My in-laws live in Livonia. My brother-in-laws both live in Livonia. I've been a member of St. Mary's Parish for 37 years, ever since I moved to Farmington Hills. It is part of my existence. One of my sons has just got engaged. He's going to be married at St. Mary's Church. And I hope, Inshallah, someday I'll have grandchildren that will go to St. Mary's Church. So I'm talking about the fact that the community is growing. I was one person, and now I have a family of 10, 12, maybe 15 grandchildren someday, I hope. And so I'm looking for the future. I'm also 63 years old, and I'm looking at this 55-year apartment residency as a way for me to, to live my sunset years so that I can be close to my church, close to my community, and be able to experience the, the community support that I've had my whole life. That's really all I want to say. I, but I do think it's very important that the whole master plan be approved now because I'm planning for my retirement and for my life. And I would really like to know that our church is, is on solid ground when it comes to the master plan.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Hello. My name is Bill Parnas, and I live at 31005 Mayville. And I, I think Father George is a good man. And I think he sees things as the glass half-full and maybe not recognizing the glass half-empty. I, I have to view it that way. I want to be charitable. My, I can talk about specific issues, but really what it all comes down to for me personally is a matter of trust. I've lived for 24 years on Mayville Street. There's been a number of events put on by St. Mary's. I know they go to I know they go to the city and ask for approval, noise variances and so forth. But yet, despite whatever the approval is, then, you know, a half hour after, the music is still playing. And so for me, these are small issues, and we just ignore them because it's just a weekend or a week. But this is not small. This is permanent. And I really, it's a trust issue for me that all these things that have been said, are they really going to be held to or not? And that is really where my concern is as a neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parnas.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Susan Chavi. I live at three one four one two Curtis, directly across the street from the church. I've lived in Livonia. I actually knew Father George when he moved. We were neighbors then. And I can one-up him by saying Merriman was a dirt road when I first moved in there. Seven Mile and Farmington were one, two lanes. Anyway, I have known Father George, watched him build an amazing church, an amazing community, and always with open doors. He's helped me personally. He's helped my family. He's allowed us, even though we're not members of church, to bury both of my parents at the Basilica. He is a man of his word when you talk about trust. He will work with you. If you need, if you have a question, go to him. I talked to him recently about lighting when I heard this was coming up. And he, he's been calling me. What are the concerns? Can you come over and tell us? We'll have an electrical engineer work with you because I am affected by the lights. I, I mean, I live directly across the street. But I have watched him build this community. I've watched him follow through. I, he is an honest man. And I don't know what else to say. I watched the Basilica be built. Everything was according to city guidelines, according to what the city requested. He is a man of his word. He is honorable. His church has open arms. I think if you ever needed something and you approached him or actually tried to talk to him directly, you would find that, you know, he would work with you. He would be willing to work with you. So I encourage you guys to be open about what's going on and trust that the city will require what's necessary for this project to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking.
Hi, my name is Darlene Wood. I live at three zero five two seven Janine Street. I've got a couple of questions. First one is, what's to say that the church can't change its constitution and then sell the building outright at a later date? There's been a lot of articles in the paper recently about population declining, especially youth. People aren't having as many children, so therefore the school might not flourish in years pa, in years going on. They had a groundbreaking ceremony in November. And that was even before the petition was presented to Livonia. So I'm not understanding quite how there's this situation where they're being open and honest. I do have an amended petition with four hundred and sixty-seven signatures from the one that I had recently submitted. Was hoping that I could give that to you today.
You can hand it to Ms. Reese, and she'll put it in our file. Thank you.
And the number of signatures are growing, but we'll leave it at that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Hello. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Julia St. Peter. I live at one eight two seven six Bainbridge Avenue. We're the last house on the street. Obviously, my husband and I are concerned about environmental issues because we're the last house on the street. But the two things I want to ask you is first, maybe to postpone maybe rezoning just until we hear more about what their plans to do with the pond and with everything. So that way, the neighbors will all know what's going on, and I, for one, would feel comfortable about that. The second issue that hasn't been talked much, I've worked in many senior homes as a history. And there is a drop-off where the creek's at, and no one has addressed that. And I know it's an independent senior community. But my concern is if someone's deteriorating with their mind, what's going to stop them to go off? Because I don't want them to fall or get hurt or anything like that. So I'm just concerned for our seniors that way. But I'm sure the facility would be beautiful and all that jazz. And it is their lands. I know they have their right to do so. But I, for one, just want to have more detailed plan before proceed forward. And that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for coming.
Hi, my name is Laura Burke. I'm at three oh five seven three. I did write something because I can go on and on and on. Hearing Father and all these other neighbors of mine, again, I could go on and on. But before I go and read my prepared speech, I do want to say that I have no reason to doubt anybody's words up here. But I am the one house, I believe, other than Mr. Johnston, that actually touches the property. I'm at three four, three oh five seven three Brookview. I am not even on there or on the petition that you guys have, okay? So my fence line is the property, okay? We, and I will first say, we have gone to weddings there. We have gone to showers there. I have gone to all my kids' sporting events there. We have spent money in the beer tent that my husband loves, Father, for the festivals. We have ridden the rides with the kids. We enjoyed the firework. We even had a party for the fireworks in our backyard. My house is perpendicular to the structure, not the school, but the actual apartment structure. So I feel a little dismayed when I see people walking my line, putting pink ribbons on my, my fence line, and many neighbors coming up to me, someone's been here and somebody's been there. And so I many times called the city. And I think I spoke to you, Mark, and I said, is there anything going on? Because I see that they're having a groundbreaking. Nothing that we've heard of is what I was told. And then somebody else said something, sent me a, I get things in my mailbox about this. And this is how I heard these things. And that, that is really, really bothersome that I had to call and call and call. And then when we called about the, we, I got this message that it was in the Free Press about the hearing. And I said, what hearing? I'm, I am so close. Why haven't I gotten it? And it was a mistake, and they didn't send them out, and that's why this was proposed to have on the thirty-first. So I'm just saying, I have nothing against the church. We've been there since nineteen eighty-four, okay? And this is my, what I actually wanted to say. The reason why I am opposed to the rezoning is quite simple. There are two- and three-story senior living structures up and down Middle Belt and a newly-built complex across from the fire department and the police station that is very beautiful, as I have also gone and looked at. There are a few on Seven Mile between Merriman and Farmington with an apartment complex on the corner of Seven Mile and Merriman. All these places, and I'm sure I can mention several more across the sturdy city, that I'm sure you get the idea. All of them fit into the area that they are located. The structures are located amongst other buildings and businesses. This proposed three-story structure does not fit into the surrounding area, which is a single-family home situation. I am in a neighborhood of over four hundred single-family homes. For a three-story structure to be there changes the whole aesthetics of that subdivision. But I will say, this does not just change the aesthetics of my home. I am perpendicular. So I am, I am fortunate enough, even though I am sitting very close to the parking, or to the, the, the property, that when I sit on my deck and I'm washing my dishes and I'm sitting in my den watching TV, I'm looking at the beautiful lawns of all my neighbors. That is not the case for the people on Hillcrest or Mayville. They will sit on their deck and look at that structure.
Ma'am, can I, can I ask?
I have.
Ma'am, 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 can I ask that you summarize?
I'm going to summarize right now.
Thank you.
If I ever thought of something being built on that field, which we expected from time to time. I mean, my husband and I are not ignorant. We figured something was going to go down. We always thought it would be with the aesthetics, with single-family homes. I have no problem, I have no issue, some people may, I don't, having somebody's house right next to mine. That's what neighbors do. That's what neighborly things are done. I understand that. But I never thought it would be a three-story structure that we have to look at. I, I totally sympathize with everything that they're talking about, the old people. I took care of my mother. I have been taking care of her. I don't have other people changing their aesthetics to take care of my mother. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am? Ma'am, you're welcome to speak. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Nadia Hanania. And I have been with this church since the beginning. Actually, I'm one of the, my husband and I were one of the founding fathers. Father George came to us in his early twenties. He baptized my five children. He also baptized my thirteen grandchildren, whether they live in the state or not. I've been living in Livonia for forty-three years in Sheffield. And I would like to move back to Livonia in our new Miriam Center, to our new Miriam Center. I always was begging Father George to start this thing here. Our church does nothing but good in Livonia. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous.
It's okay.
We spread love. We spread hope. We spread gratitude. We spread, the Bible teaches us, love thy neighbor. We never, we never aggravated our neighbors, whether in our home, in our businesses, or definitely not in our church. I would really, really like to have this project go through. Because like I said, it's not just me. There's a lot, I've been a widow for thirty-five years. I was widowed when I was forty-seven. And I'm begging for somewhere like this, where I could walk to my church. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Greg Yan. I live right next door to Mrs. Burke on Brookview. So she's not the only one that the property touches. I am the neighbor, along with Mrs. Burke, that is at the dead end of Brookview. We were talking earlier about notification and all this other thing. Most of these people are here because they just found out about this the other day, period. I've lived there for twenty years, and not once was this mentioned to the members of the community that already occupy the outskirts of this property that's zoned for public land. I really have a couple points to make here. But first, I'm going to read the term elderly housing that we've been talking about tonight because it's right in the petition that was submitted to you guys. And the term elderly housing refers to a building or a group of buildings that provides housing in which at least eighty percent of the occupied units are rented at least to one person over fifty-five. So anybody else in that apartment does not necessarily have to be fifty-five, and this is an apartment. The other twenty percent of the occupants can be anybody. So the term elderly housing allows somebody that's under fifty-five to move into that building, unlike what we've been being told here tonight at this particular juncture. Secondly, you brought up a great point earlier about dividing this into two sections. That property up front was zoned for a school back in the early days of Livonia. It was Bryant Junior High when I moved in. That property had since been torn down and sold, or kept by the school board. That property is zoned for some type of an educational facility. The backland on this property was always public land, zoned for public land. This is a high-density building being built on land that was designated for public land. And should we create an apartment complex here? It's going to set precedent for other properties in this city when somebody comes in and says, I have an idea, or I have something I want to do, and nobody else around them knows anything about it. This, this is, this is elderly housing. One person, and you guys should know this because you saw the petition. We've been throwing that term around all night. And that's the true term, and that's written right in this petition. Now, I understand you guys don't write the, make the law, but this, to throw this to the city council and force them to get in all kinds of accolades and battles at this point for two separate issues here, a school up front and a high-density apartment complex on public land before everything has been studied and accurately portrayed, would not be a service to the city council either. So this is two separate issues, the front and then the housing. And nobody wants to come home and stare at an apartment complex. We have seen all the lighting, heard all the issues from all the residents. And when you're that person in that backyard or that resident with the information that we received a day ago, we've had no opportunity to look at this or come together with the planning commission. If it wasn't for two people that called on January fourth, we would have never known about this because those petitions were not sent out. It was a supposed accident that these came out or were not sent out, and then everything was pushed back to today. This was supposed to be done on the seventeenth. We never got our letters on top of everything else that's been said here today until two people discovered it. Had those letters not been sent out and none of us showed up, I'm not really sure how today would have went because there would have been nobody sitting here because nobody knew about it.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Yan.
And that's my statement.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir.
How you doing? Brad Gertie, three zero eight one zero Bobridge Street. I was born in Livonia. I grew up in the house I live in now. When I bought a house, I bought one on Doris Street, just south of Seven Mile, same square mile. And then when we had more money and we were going to go buy a new house, we actually bought my parents' house and spent all the money we had and the money we're still making to stay in this neighborhood. I have played in that field. That field is part of our community. I love Father George and the whole thing. We got married at Saint Mary's Cultural Center. This whole thing is already part of our lives. I don't live on Mayville, and I don't live on Bainbridge, so I don't deal with the lights. Thanks, guys, for blocking those for us. But I'm raising my kids here. We play in this field. I don't want to look at an apartment building. Part of the reason we bought here is because it is residential housing. That's what we have. I don't, I don't have my ducks in a row. This is an emotional plea. This is part of our lives. Love these people. They've always, they're great. Love the whole thing. We all know about this, and nobody wants to look at it. I don't want to look at it. I don't, I want to keep walking my kids through this field and playing in the woods with them. That's what I want to do. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir.
Hi, my name is Michael Colliton. I live at thirty-one one ninety-three Bobridge Street. I live approximately five hundred yards in direct line of this three-to-four-story massive complex they wish to build. I bought this neigh, bought this neighborhood, there was Bryant School there. I bought a house by a school with the gymnasium. They tore it down, but I will tell you this. We welcomed Father George into our neighborhood. They're part of our community. And to find out nine days ago that they want to build a massive structure right by our homes without even consulting us, we, we came to their events. We supported them. We did all of this, all of these people here because they love Livonia and they appreciate what you guys are doing. We respect Saint, we respect the church. Their best ethical is beautiful. So all I'm asking is this. I understand there are two lots. One is both requesting zoning. It would make logical sense for two things. Number one, if you wish to consider approving the zone for the, for the school, for the gymnasium, I bought a house, buy one. I really don't have like a stand-up. It makes a lot of sense. Number two, I would welcome a conversation in depth with our community, with the parish and your members, so we can agree to work together. together as part of community to build, help build Father George's dream. Help build our community along with your great Christian values you have. Does anyone argue with that? That's what we want, right? Give us the time, please, I'm asking you to deny this zoning request for this massive complex. Give us the time to work together as a community, as you wish us to, right? Aren't we Livonia? They are too. Please deny that second request, and please let it give us the time to talk and work together. Thank you so much, guys. I appreciate it.
Good evening, sir.
Hi, good evening. My name is David Wyde. I live at three zero eight eight nine Mayville. Most of what I'm gonna say is really already been said, but, you know, this is the first time that I've attended, you know, one of these planning commission meetings. That's why it's very important, right, to myself, my family, you know, my boys. You know, and I'll echo some of the other comments, right, just about notification. I had a neighbor actually tell me, and I go and start searching online and find some documents, find a groundbreaking, right? That's kind of appalling. My understanding that Mayor was there, right? How does that work? So, anyway. But, you know, so to kind of go through some of these, right, you know, eighty apartments, right, how are you gonna shuttle, how are you gonna get eighty apartments worth of people and cars in and out of that facility, right? Their driveway is not gonna support it, right? You know, we've had people already talk about stormwater retention, right? We all live in Michigan. It's bad enough as it is without, you know, businesses building up and, you know, sealing the ground from being able to absorb the water. You know, as mentioned, right, three stories don't match the neighborhood, right? It's a single-family home community, you know, and, yeah, I asked the commission to deny the request. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming.[728.88][728.88](APPLAUSE) Good evening, sir.
My name is Evan Lindman. I live at one eight seven three six Hillcrest Street. I wanna challenge the commission to think about what we're thinking about tonight. I didn't know about this petition and whether, you know, zoning until probably three or four days ago. I live very close to the church. I own and operate a lawn care business, and let me tell you, what they're proposing is gonna be a disaster to the houses and the river and the stream, the woods all around, what they're trying to do. It is not, and come on, let's be honest, this is a church. They could've had the courtesy, if they're being truthful and honest, to send out more letters to the surrounding community about what they're actually, you know, going to do. We actually need to think about this. And quite honestly, the church is beautiful, but if you put a school and a giant apartment there on Merriman, that's a big eyesore for people who are driving by and for the people all surrounding there, though, too. This is a field for people growing up, and I would challenge you. I don't, it's, apparently, it's supposed to be in a prime climate for the nuns and, you know, the nuns there. I would question how many people actually, like, live in Livonia that go to their church, and I don't even think their church is actually thriving as well as they're putting it off, though, too. So, really, think about this. We need to think about what we're thinking about this. Don't push this through tonight.
Folks, let's not, let's settle down, everyone. Give this young lady a chance to speak.
Hello, I'm Sandra Lund. I have been in Livonia for over fifty-one, maybe fifty-two years. I actually went to Bryant, and I realize there's a lot of things going on, new complexes, but if the church really wanted the school, be realistic, they would've bought the church, this school, twenty years ago. Now, I'm not trying to be being, but I see, I face, right by Laura, right on Hillcrest, facing the church. I love seeing the church. That's my sunset the happy place. If that is blocking my view, and I can't see, what's, you know, I love the scenery. Not only the scenery, the wildlife, the river, all these creeks that children go through. My biggest concern is the Mayville, where there's that end. I see children going through. How are they gonna get to school? If they have these elderly, God knows what they're gonna be like. They say they're gonna be screedum, but this, be realistic, this is a new world. People are dangerous. And we are on a dead-end street on Brookview, and to have these children come through, passing through that creek, crossing the bridge, going to Coolidge, this is a big concern for me. I love these children. I don't want them to be, you know, attacked. You know, this is a real world. The people, children are dropped off on the dead-end street. They go to school. I watch them go to school every day, you know? That's my biggest concern. And not only this complex, you know, this, the water, like, environment, that's really bothering me, 'cause when the floods come up, the river goes up to that bridge level. I've seen it, and it's actually overflowed. So I feel sorry for Sunset, because I was gonna buy on that side, and I didn't, because that flood zone, the water is going constantly. I did not buy on that side. So I feel sorry for those people on that dead-end, the other side.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you for your comments.[952.93][952.93](APPLAUSE) Ma'am?
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Trisha Woodland. I live at three one oh seven nine Mayville Street, and I'm not here to degrade the church, or Father George, or any of that stuff. I'm just very concerned about the three-story apartment building that they wanna put up. I don't feel like it fits in with the neighborhood. I feel like I've lived places where there have been empty fields, and they typically always get filled up with housing, and so we can't necessarily expect that that field may remain vacant. But if it's gonna be filled up, it needs to be filled up with similar structures of regular housing. The other thing, just as an aside, is if this is gonna be an apartment building for elderly people, it seems to me that elderly people do much better if they don't have a lot of stairs to go up and down, and so it's a little, it's just weird to me that you would want a three-story apartment building for elderly people when they're better off on main-level flooring. So, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.[1033.52][1033.52](APPLAUSE) Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Hyden McCory, I am three four-
Sir, please, one moment. Everyone, please quiet down. Thank you.
Good evening. Hyden McCory, I'm three four eight two zero Fairfax Drive. Without being said, I mean, the Basilica of St. Mary brought me into Livonia fifteen years ago. It brought my parents into Livonia. It brought four of my brothers into Livonia. It brought my in-laws, unfortunately, from Kentucky into Livonia.[1060.08][1060.08](LAUGHTER)
This is a recorded meeting, you know?
Edited out. No, but in all seriousness, in all seriousness, I thank the community, I thank the community for all of the concerns. I mean, I think it suffice to say, many of the concerns are fear-based concerns, right? I mean, some of the concerns, some of the concerns as far as who's gonna be coming into Livonia are similar to the same type of remarks that we heard from similar members of the community fifty-one years ago, when the Basilica wanted to break ground in the city of Livonia, because they didn't want our type to be in the city of Livonia. They didn't want-
Please, everyone, please, settle down.
Thankfully, 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 the number of individuals who echoed that sentiment were few, and the greater Livonia community was an open-armed community. And since then, the Livonia has welcomed us, and welcomed many from our community, and I'm talking about the Orthodox community, into the city of Livonia, who have lived here, who have started businesses here, who have thrived here, and who've been active members of the society. And just like that, we have to look at the future of who's gonna be coming into Livonia, and who's gonna be participants of Livonia. At the same time, who's also gonna come back into Livonia. I know that two of my parents are both elderly. One lives in a senior living facility right now that he does not like. My mother, who's gonna be going into a senior living facility, my mother-in-law wants to be going into. These are people who want to be coming back into the city of Livonia. On top of the economic benefit that's gonna be happening, on top of the involvement with the community, I think there's gonna be many benefits with this development, and I appreciate a yes vote on this zoning board. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.[1165.45][1165.45](APPLAUSE)
Good evening.
My name's Paul Condon, and Kathy and I live at three one 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 five Hillbrook. We are directly across the ditch from the proposal. Just a couple of questions, technical questions, maybe. If you do pass the rezoning tonight, and during the future steps of this process, the project is nixed, too expensive, they don't get the approvals, whatever, does the zoning stay as you rezonate, or does it revert back?
It stays.
It stays. Okay. That being said, if I had just bought, I don't know, maybe two-hundred-thousand dollars' worth of property, couldn't get it rezoned the way I wanted to and needed to, I would then probably try and sell that. I don't know that the church would have any value in a big piece of property that now they really can't build on. So I wonder how that situation would possibly develop. Also, very concerned about the runoff, like many of our neighbors. I do wanna try and be respectful of the fact that a property owner has within certain guidelines that are being established here, the right to do with their property. They put the money up. If we wanted that property, we probably should've all got together, chipped in and bought it. But we didn't. But we never had a chance, obviously. Well, as true or not. So the rezoning would stay with the property?
Correct.
With the rezoning would stay with it. Okay. So someone else then could come in and do something different, obviously. Okay. Very good. I was just curious about how that process works, so, thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Condon.
Thank you.[1269.58][1269.58](APPLAUSE)
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Ganem, three one three three five Rayburn Street. I'm also the parish council president at the Basilica of St. Mary's. And a few people have said some kind of insulting things regarding the Basilica, so I'd like to address them. First of all, I wanna apologize if anybody was offended by our groundbreaking. That was done as a ceremonial event. We all understood that we did not have anything approved, and we weren't putting, you know, a building up. It was done ceremonial to celebrate our fiftieth anniversary, to celebrate Father George's fiftieth anniversary as a priest, and his fiftieth wedding anniversary. It was done because our bishops and our hierarchy was here. It was completely ceremonial. It wasn't done underhanded, conniving, or anything else, as people have tried to imply this evening. So I do find that insulting. Number two, the senior living center that is being built, that is proposed to be built for the parishioners in our church that want to be there, and it will not be exclusive to them, they wanna be there because it is next to the church. They don't wanna move to another facility. They wanna be able to walk to the church when they get to the point where they can't drive, as many people do at that age. They wanna be able to walk to the church. They wanna be able to walk to the activities that we have in the church. Every Wednesday, we have a group of ladies that meet and put together our bulletin. They have senior activities. They have senior luncheons. Like Mrs. Hanania said, they are anxious to live there. If there are other facilities in the area, they probably won't move into those. They are anxious to move into the one that will be adjacent to our church. When that is built, and we have our seniors living there, it will bring people into the area, parishioners back, that wanna take their parents out to lunch. They will then be frequenting the restaurants in the area, that wanna take their parents shopping, that wanna take their parents to all the other stores in the area. It will bring more economic growth to the area. The issue of the water, we are going to be residents of the area as we are building a building there, so we will be affected if we don't take care of the water. So if there's groundwater, if there's runoff, we are going to make sure that all these issues are addressed, as we are going to have a building in that area. We have our church. We have our offices. We occupy that area. We're not building it and then leaving. We're there. So we need to make sure that that will be taken care of. So the issue that all these people have spoken about will face us, too, and we will address it. Anytime-
Can you summarize, if possible, please?
Yes. Anytime that we have been addressed, at any issue that has come to Father George's attention, where a neighbor's upset about something, immediately I get a phone call. We must address this issue. So people here are speaking that we are the, as if we are the worst neighbors ever. If the music is too loud, we lower it immediately. Have we made mistakes? Absolutely, and I'm sure everybody else has.
Please, please, please.
But we follow the noise. We have a permit, and we follow it. Has it ever been left on longer? I'm sure it has. And we apologize for that, and we're always working. Sometimes the person in charge doesn't know when the noise permit. We are not perfect. We're also a group of volunteers that run the church. We're not paid employees, so we do make mistakes. I ask that you do approve this project in its entirety, as it relies on each other. And one more thing, I'm sorry. People keep talking about the three-story building. I don't think they paid attention to what Mr. Abdiner said. It's three feet higher than a two-story house. So they're talking about it like it's, you know, fifty feet higher than a normal home. It's three feet higher than a two-story house. We need to keep that in perspective when you hear about the building. Thank you.
Folks, we need to keep the media moving, so try to keep the clapping down a little bit. I understand that you wanna show your appreciation for the comments, but keep it brief, please. Sir?
Ray Riza, three zero five three seven Brookview. Two houses from the dead end on the field.
Okay, thank you.
First of all, ma'am, you were insulted.
Sir, sir, please address us. I don't wanna get into a debate back and forth between people, you know, let's try to keep emotions low.
We were insulted that, we found out two days ago.
I understand.
We were insulted. Congratulations, Father George, on the fifty years of great work at that church. You don't celebrate with a groundbreaking and a shovel with the mayor. You celebrate with a party and a celebration, not a groundbreaking. Second of all, I don't think it's been addressed, and I sent an email to the commission, so this is all verified information, if you wanna go to the email. Seventeen-point-nine percent decrease in home value on a home within a thousand feet of a senior home development in the short run.[1591.33][1591.33](APPLAUSE) These are all facts. Now, I'm gonna reiterate a lot what that's been said. I will be staring at a three, or possibly four-story building, 'cause it is gonna be allowed, if it is allowed, to go up to four stories. Plans may change. I'm gonna go, and I'm not stupid, I know that that field should've been developed a long time ago, with single-family homes like mine. Now, my single-family home, I'm gonna sit there and look at a basically commercial building? No. I don't want that. And I don't want a seventeen-point-nine percent decrease in my home value all of the sudden. So I just wanted to address that. All of the other stuff, the church has been wonderful, and they do wonderful things, but numbers don't lie.
Thank you, Mr. Riza.[1651.01][1651.01](APPLAUSE) Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, Kathy Platsky, three zero five four nine Janine. First, I wanna say that, yeah, I'm a little upset that I just found out about this three days ago as well. Didn't have a lot of time to do research. The research that I did do, though, was in regards to the Livonia Vision Twenty-One master plan. And what I found throughout that, there's several subcategories that go, speak directly to maintaining open space, maintaining green space, and a couple of them, the sustainability and resiliency, once the goal of conserving and restoring open space, waterways, trees. Parks Trails, open space states they wanna develop maintaining and preserving of open space, green space. Subcategory Parks and Rec encourage the preservation of open space. In addition, the public surveys that were done in this master plan talk about the residents wanting to keep parks, green space, trees, single-family neighborhoods, and they desire the preservation of natural spaces. Get into another portion of the housing development in the master plan, and it says that the recommendation is to seamlessly incorporate multifamily units into the neighborhoods, and that new housing should be encouraged to be located close to the street with prominent entrances facing the street, residential in scale, and with parking, street parking available. It appears that none of this is consistent with the Vision Twenty-One plan for Livonia, so I'm gonna ask that, because of this flying in the face of Livonia's own master plan, that this petition is opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.[1762.53][1762.53](APPLAUSE) Good evening, ma'am. I'll start with you.
Hello, my name's Margaret Yan, three zero five six two Brookview, and it would appear that the last lady and I both wrote exactly what we were gonna say, so I'm not gonna reiterate everything she said. But Livonia Vision Twenty-One is about community and family. Community, we are welcome to support. We're welcome to be here with the Basilica, maybe work with them, see something that might compromise both. When we bought this house, it was a single-family neighborhood, single-family homes. That's kind of what we envisioned would go in that field at one point. That's kind of what we envisioned would go in that field at one point. Another issue that I have concerning with is the last stormwater management drainage was in 2002. At that time, it was known that the infrastructure for Livonia is subpar, actually aging, and being right on the creek, I can sit in my backyard, watch the stormwater raise four to six feet with rushing water. That is not going to support the extra concrete that this project is bringing in. So, you know, if you guys are really, really in support of Livonia Vision 21, you're on board with the city, I urge you to decline at least half of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, sir?
Good evening. My name is Robert Hoekstra, 30564 Janine Street, directly adjacent to the field. And I'll be very brief, because I just want to make one, one point, one item I want to implant in you with respect to the intent of this meeting tonight, which is the reduction of even any square inch of public land in Livonia. I deem as completely unacceptable, given families first since 1950. Public land is precious. Any reduction of it, to me, is unacceptable. I am asking you to oppose this project.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. I live at 30528 Janine Street. My home is kind of adjacent to the field, so while my home doesn't... Oh, I'm sorry, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Wonderful. So my home does lay adjacent to the field. It doesn't back directly, but when we look out of our back door, or out of our second-story window, we are able to see the field. It's over to the left of us. I do have concerns very similar to everyone else's who lives in the area. The main one, well, actually, there's two main ones, any type of negative impact when it comes to flooding in our neighborhood, as well as the marketability and value of our homes, if we were to sell our homes anytime in the near future. And even after that, not in the near future, because I have a very hard time believing that people who move out to this area want to look out their back door to an apartment complex, a large parking lot, and potentially any other structures that could potentially be built in the future if the church did choose to purchase more property in the future. Those are all current concerns of mine. I would also like to bring up the fact that, you know, one of the church members brought up "Love thy neighbor" as a Bible verse, I believe. I'm not well-versed in the Bible, however, I will say I don't see that happening here. It's offensive to me that the church took the time to have groundbreaking ceremony. And while I understand that Father George was ill for six months, at least that's what he said during the, I believe, the study hearing last Tuesday, I find it hard to believe that there's time to schedule and attend a groundbreaking, but no time to inform your neighbors about what's going on around them. I don't get it.
Good.
Also, just to piggyback off that real quick, I know I'm over time, I'm sorry, but I've only been here since 2021, and the church has already left a very bad impression on me personally, as a neighbor. The music during their summer festival, the bass is so loud that people's homes vibrate. When I called the police, over 30 people had called before me to complain about it, and the music did not subside. And I want answers as to why neighbors are not taken into consideration then, but now we should take you into consideration now.
Thank you, ma'am. Comments? Good evening, sir.
Hello, my name is Austin St. Peter, 18276 Bainbridge, north side of the proposed apartment buildings. I just feel that the justification to going from the special two-story to three-story to even possibly four-story, the justification was just stating that they believe that there will be, like, want for that. I just want, like, a more, like, a more documented explanation that it is needed to be a three-story. And unless it's not, then we can stay at the two-story. So I suggest to postpone this until that's verified, that it is needed to be 89 units or so.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Hello, Mr. Martin.
Christopher Martin, and I'm a 70-year resident of the city of Livonia. My parents had been here for quite some time also, both in the Navy and World War II. Bought an old Rosedale Gardens in 1947. Grandfather and grandmother had also been in the city. Paid a lot of taxes over the years. My taxes went to buy that, put a school up over there that later on was taken down. This is still public land. I want it to remain public land. Put a park there, name the park after whoever they want. It's public land. Father talked about some type of constitution. I carry this with me. It's a little tattered, it's in my pocket. Constitution of the United States. We're not some third-world country. You guys have the opportunity to keep this public land. That's what it was owned, that's what it was designated for. Don't change it.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Hi, good evening.
Hi, my name's Jamie Jeffries. I live at 17551 Hillcrest Street, and I want to read a letter on behalf of my mom and me.
You're welcome to.
Okay, it's written from her perspective. My name is Sally Jeffries. I bought my home at 17551 Hillcrest Street in 1994 and have lived there the past 29 years. The side of my house and backyard are adjacent to the walkway to the field, and my backyard has the full view of the field. When I purchased my home, there were two things that were important: living in the city of Livonia and the view of the field. I chose to live in Livonia because it is one of the few remaining cities that actually cares about their residents. St. Mary's proposed plans seem completely at odds with Livonia's usual posture of looking out for its residents. To my surprise and dismay, and extreme disappointment, there was no heads-up or advance notice given to any of the residents about the proposed plans. This is particularly concerning with respect to the rezoning for the apartment complex. In fact, many of the residents who live on the field, including myself, have recently remodeled or invested in expensive upgrades to their homes. If I had known that there could be an apartment complex in my backyard, I never would have done the upgrade. I am especially anxious that the apartment complex will devalue my home and property value and make it difficult for me to sell my house. The proposed plans will adversely affect the residents' life as follows. One, the traffic. We don't know whether now or in the future, the property owner may construct additional driveways or private access roads in order to facilitate bringing of more traffic to the site. Even if it's not the case, I'm worried that there may potentially be additional daily traffic created by the school students, families, staff, visitors, delivery vehicles, et cetera. Although I've been told the school will serve students aged 1 through 5, I do not know how many children will be enrolled, so I cannot tell what the school's traffic will be. However, regardless of the school's impact, I expect the traffic will increase exponentially from the apartment building, with many dozens of drivers to and from the building, residents, workmen, moving vans, daily deliveries of all types, from furniture to Amazon packages, creating even more substantial traffic volume. The noise inclusion of the apartment building will greatly increase the noise level of our peaceful neighborhood. Three is light pollution. The field is currently dark at the night behind the house. The lights of St. Mary's complex shine very brightly year-round. These buildings are more in the corner, but impact the houses near it with their lights. The three-story apartments and the parking lot, however, would put so much more light into the entire field that all the residents would need to purchase blinds likely. Flooding, as has been mentioned by many people, environmental impact, and the field availability. The proposed development will disrupt the neighborhoods and my 29-plus years of enjoyment and use of the field for exercising, taking your pets. And to conclude, besides describing how this will negatively impact my neighbors and me, I wish to bring to the Planning Commission's attention that the proposed uses in the field rezoning approval of today's meeting appear to be something of a bait and switch from the representations made in the 2018 purchase agreement. The purchase agreement provides intended purpose of the premises proposed by purchaser being used by a senior center. Senior centers are commonly understood to be entities that provide supportive services to the elderly and are also so defined in Section 321 of the Older Americans Act. The operation of a senior center does not equate to the construction of residential dwellings. At the Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday, January 24, a member asked, "Where else in the city of Livonia has rezoned public land for apartment housing?" The answer is nowhere. In other words, there's no precedent for such an action. For all these reasons explained above, I urge the commission to not bring precedent in this time, so that my neighbors and I can continue to live in the tranquil neighborhood where we currently reside.
Thank you, Ms. Jeffries. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Alex Villarreal, at 17415 Sunset Street. My wife and I both were born and raised in Livonia. We were confused for a few years and moved into the city, but now we're back. Moved back in 2017, and the main reason was we wanted a quiet suburban community. So we moved in, we love the field, love everything about it. So bear with me, I'm not a public speaker, I'm a construction worker.
That's all right.
So I did some quick math, and I listened to everybody speak tonight, and I got a couple concerns. The one was the water. It's a big field, there's 36 acres left on the south side. All that topography flows north to the creek. If this rezoning goes through with that proposed development, that's a lot of concrete going in, blocking that view, or blocking that flow of rainwater. Right now, they're proposing about 1,600 feet, leaving 400 feet left on the east end. That's a ton of water that's going to get trapped and either be stagnant on the LPS property, or back up even further into the neighborhood. That's a major concern for me. We met with the church yesterday, they were very respectful, and I appreciate it sincerely. They didn't have an answer for that. They said they'd work on it. This is what I do for a living. That's going to be very hard to tackle without regrading the LPS property, which I don't think you're going to let them do. Another concern, you mentioned engineering had no comment on utilities, and I didn't hear anything on the traffic. Can this area in Livonia support that? I think this whole idea of denying or approving is premature, and I think it needs to be delayed until more studies have been done, which is my next point. When was the last wetland study done? Why isn't that as an issue in front of you to make this decision? This is a big decision, you can't go back once you make it. Let's make sure we put everything in front of us that we need to make the right decision.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Shar Behringhaus, and I'm a Livonia resident. My family and I are proud parishioners of St. Mary's Church. Our church family started out 50 years ago, meeting our new young priest, a newlyweds sent to help us form a parish. We rented space from various local churches, then were finally able to build our first modest church, which is now attached to the cultural center, where many have attended events and sampled the hospitality of our dedicated staff. Our leader and visionary, Father George, saw a beautiful basilica within our means, and as a parish, we worked hard together to bring this dream to fruition. But that is not where the dream ends. A community where one can worship, gather, and grow on in years was part of the vision that we've embraced and planned for. This land was purchased many years ago with that dream in mind. We have come far and set our sights on the beautiful Miriam Center. This project is well-thought-out, well-planned, and in keeping with the high standards that we have set forth for every part of our St. Mary's campus. As we all know, our senior citizens are the backbone of our community, and they often need additional assistance and services. Building a senior center on the church's vacant land would be a great way to provide these services. The senior center would provide a place for seniors to socialize and take in, take part in activities that will help keep them active and engaged. This would also provide a great opportunity for the church to give back to its local community by providing a much-needed service. Not only would this senior center be beneficial to our seniors in our community, but it would also bring economic benefits. A senior center could provide jobs for those in the area, and it would also increase foot traffic in the area, which could bring in additional business for local retailers. I hope that with your support, we can build a future for generations to come. Change and growth is sometimes difficult, and we acknowledge and understand that some prefer to see the land remain in its present state. While that is not in keeping with our proposal, we are committed to being good stewards to our neighbors and the Livonia community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Behringhaus. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Larry Nasser at Farmington Road here in Livonia. First of all, let me thank the board for the work you do. I know sometimes it's very challenging, and this probably time is one of them. And I would like to thank also the audience, everybody who attended here tonight, to express their feelings and their concerns. I am a parishioner of St. Mary's. My father was one of the founders of St. Mary's. I've been in Livonia for 63 years. And also, many of them that are here opposing were supporters of mine when I ran for school board and was on the school board. And so I have a lot of love and affection for everybody in this room, and I'm hoping that we can in some way come to some kind of agreement where everybody can live in peace. And if there was miscommunication or known communication on behalf of our church that some of the neighbors felt, we do apologize for that, and I would be more than happy to intervene as a facilitator, to get them together. Many of them that are here know me from the board as working for the community and working for them. So with that, I would like to say a little bit more about who we are. And we are the teachers, the doctors, lawyers, parapros, the janitors, the veterans. Our St. Mary's consists of all of these people. I was born and raised here, as I said, and attended the first Cooper School that was on the corner of Middle Belt and the Ann Arbor Trail. It was a little red school. Probably most of you don't know it, if you haven't been there that long or attended. It was a little red school, and it only had five, six rooms, or so. It was very small until they built a new Cooper, which I was the first class at that new Cooper School there that was down on Ann Arbor Trail. My wife was also a resident of Livonia all of her life. She graduated from Churchill, and we raised our two kids here who graduated from Livonia Public Schools, from Franklin. And we will meet, we will most likely die here. You know, it's funny, because at my age now, I see that there's less in front of me than there was behind me. And so when I think about those things, I think about, and I think about all the things that are going on in our nation and in the states, and of course, the great city of Livonia here. And as I age, I pray that my health will stay good, and I hope to live in my house as long as possible. But most likely, at some point, a home will be too much for me, and I'll need some kind of assistance.
Mr. Nasser, I'm going to ask if you can summarize...
I think everybody will need that kind of support, I'm sorry.
If you can summarize.
I didn't.
If you can please summarize.
Okay, so I just, I'm hoping that the board will come out in support of this. It is something that we do need, something that we have been looking at for a long time, somewhere to go with our elderly people. One last thing I'll comment on is that when I was on the school board, one of our big challenges was declining enrollment. We had declining enrollment, and for every student that we lost, it was $8,000. And when we had declining enrollment, less money coming in, we had to cut programs, and we had to cut services. It was terrible. It was really bad. And it caused a lot of people to start moving west to North Villanova schools. Father George had mentioned about 70 people, 70 elders that are, and 50 of them I know are here in Livonia. Those, and those widows, if they would be allowed to move into a place like this, would give 50 homes for single fam, for young families that are coming to start new homes and have kids, and it will support the school system, which is very important. The school system is talked about less than it should be. It's a very important aspect, that's why many of us are here, have lived here, stayed here, and generations stay in the same house for many years, for many generations. So I hope that the community can come together, see, I know it's difficult, it's a, there was always difficult times, closing schools, you all remember that, and all the other things that had to happen, so. But in any case, in any case... -had to happen, so, but in any case, in any case, thank you very much for hearing me out, and I hope that the whole community can come together on this. We shouldn't, shouldn't be something that parts us. Hopefully, something that brings us together in some way, shape, or form.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Mary Garrity, I live at 30810 Bobridge Street. Just wanna say that our neighborhood is also filled with a lot of great people, policemen, nurses like me, doctors, lawyers. We're a great bunch of people, too. So, just throwing that out there. And also, Livonia also has a master plan. I'm gonna read it, it's in my email that I emailed you guys, but I'm gonna read it, and I'm gonna have a little bit to say about it, but it literally says, "Livonia Vision 21 Master Plan." First of all, let's see. Develop and maintain comprehensive park, trail, recreation, fitness, and sport facilities and programs. The rezoning, this is my part, would limit public access, access to frequently used trails and open space for recreation and fitness. Next thing, preserve and/or incorporate natural drainage and floodplains wherever possible into park and recreation sites. My rebuttal is, allowing for building here would not preserve this natural drainage and floodplain land, and would prevent public use and enjoyment. Lastly, 'cause my email was 20 million pages. Develop, maintain, and preserve sufficient open space and recreation facilities to fully satisfy the wide variety of recreation needs of residents. My rebuttal is, this is one of the few public open spaces that is conducive to recreation, like flying a kite with your kids, remote control airplane, walking your dogs, going on a nature hike, like my husband said, you know, seeing the deer. Please vote no.
Thank you, Ms. Garrity. We did get a chance to read your emails while it was very well-written, I appreciate that, thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, thank you for letting me speak, thanks for your work tonight. I'd also like to thank the Brookwood Estates Committee for doing a great job. I was part of that group who had no idea that this was happening until just a few days ago.
Can I interrupt you for one second, just ask who you are?
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Mark Vines, and I'm at 30547 Bobridge.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to say, and I'm not the sharpest tool in the shed, but I would like to say, Father George, we haven't met, but I respect you very much, and I respect your congregation, and I respect what you're trying to do. You mentioned that you love your neighbors, and I do as well. As far as the enter, the environmental concerns, people have talked about that tonight, and have said, I think, a lot of, given a lot of valid information about that, and I think that the, the committee should really consider that information's what's, you know, we've had some very talented people give information, I think that really needs to be considered strongly. As far as having a senior, a senior facility, I can tell you that my wife and I took care of all four of our parents. I'm not saying that we were perfect, I'm not saying that we did the best we could. And with that being said, it would've been nice to be able to walk out my back door and take mom to church, or any of those kind of things. But in certain cases, we didn't have that. We weren't able to add on an adjacent building for my parents. And, and I understand the want-to, but I'm more about the need-to, and there's a lot of good people out there that need help, and they can get the help with the withstanding infrastructure. So, with that said, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir? You're up.
Thank you for letting me talk. My name is Marlon Hanstead, 30546 Brookview Drive. Many of my close neighbors are right with me here tonight as well. Couple of things I wanna address. Number one, constitution, I'll get back to that one. The other thing is our, a little bit of our story, not to bore you, but this is our story. We were first married 42 years ago, lived in Livonia. We left, went to Plymouth Canton area, grew the kids up there. We always said, "There's no better city than Livonia, Michigan." And we came back. Six years ago, kinda planning out where we're going out into the golden sunset of retirement, we said, "We don't need this large house out, we don't need it. We're gonna sell and go back to Livonia." We bought the ranch there, right on Brookview Drive, just six years ago. Now I'm getting this thrown at me, and my value's gonna drop unbelievably. It's been stated here, 17% after six years of being a resident here, again. It's not as friendly if this is zoned, it's not as friendly as a town as I thought. The other thing is, let's go back to constitution. I can speak from experience. I was on the Board of Directors slash Elder Board of the largest church in Detroit metro area, located out off on M14 in Plymouth, Michigan. We changed constitutions a couple times within the couple terms I was in. So, don't tell me they can't not resell it. They can change the constitution to resell it. They can do that, if it's an internal board, which my assumption is it is, that's what it sounds like. That's my concern. I stand here, my wife Susan, 30546 Brookview Drive, we vehemently oppose this zoning.
Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Amy Bonzer, I live at 17525 Hillcrest. And I've attended the study meeting last week, and I've been listening very carefully at both meetings. And I'm hearing some discrepancies in what we're being told about the three-story complex. Last week, we were told it was going to be independent living, yet a lot of the members of the congregation have spoken about how they want to have a place for their parents to age and get the assistance they, they need. So, will this be assisted living, or will this be independent living? They're two very different things. Assisted living is a 24/7 operation with lots of staff, lots of cars. There's already gonna be a myriad of parking spaces and dumpsters needed for the space, so I just would like some clarification on that. I'm highly opposed to any form of the senior living. I would welcome a school. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Laura Catania, 17474 Doris. And what that woman just kinda brought up is what I've been hearing again here right now. And that still gives me pause. I mean, we all have emotional feelings about it right now. And no one is trying to criticize or critique anyone, or say they're not loyal, they're not Christian, they're not caring, but it comes down, I think, to black and white. And tonight, it seems like there's too many disparities, too many discrepancies, and it really has to come down to very black and white when you make these decisions. Not about our feelings or anything like that. I mean, you have to know what you're gonna do with this land. It has to be given. We understand, we wanna protect, they're seniors, they want this for them. It's very emotional right now. And I feel it has come down to dollars and cents, telling you what you're going to do, and having very specific things. And sitting in here, right now, another woman came up, and she said a wonderful story, but she said, "Senior center." Again, another discrepancy, senior center. What are you saying? Are you going to build an activity center, like Livonia Seniors? Are you just building buildings for 55 and over? What is the plan here? It still doesn't make any sense. So, I ask that the board really look at just facts, figures, dollar cents. There's not enough answers right now to put this in right now. And I ask they postpone this.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Good evening, sir.
Mike Burgess, 30825 Mayville. Some of the flooding concerns that the residents have brought up, right behind where the garage and the fence are, behind the church, well, behind the garage, there is a storm drain. And about 50 yards away from there, there's another storm drainage. And all the years that I've been here, which is well over a dozen, I've never seen an adequate water supply flow through there on drainage. And I'm just asking that the city council at least postpone the vote until the en, city engineers can assess that value of those two storm drains. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. Good evening, ma'am.
I'm Superril, 30540 Janine Street. I'm just gonna be real brief, I wasn't planning on talking tonight, but I just want, when you're making your decision tonight, to consider what would be best for the community as a whole, and, you know, leaving this as public land where the whole public can use it, or rezoning it to accommodate the church community, which the more I hear tonight, as much as they say it, it will be for everybody in the community, it sounds very exclusive to me, to their community, and not that they're reaching out to the residents of Livonia, the neighborhood as a whole.
Thank you, Ms.
Hi, I'm Father Jim King. I am one of the priests at the Basilica of St. Mary. I have been serving here in this community for 26 years now, I can't believe it's gone that fast. But I came here directly out of seminary to help serve with Father George. I was asked by the community to come and work with their youth. And to this day, I was a layman when I first got here, became a deacon, and now a priest. I still serve in that capacity, I oversee the youth and outreach ministry at our church. And it's been a privilege and an honor to be here in Livonia. I bought my first home here in Livonia, raised my family here in Livonia. The Basilica has, is my home parish, where my kids are being raised, where they were baptized, and God willing, where they will be married one day. But I really just want to say that over the years, I've had an opportunity to meet many of the members, and the neighbors, and the residents here in Livonia, and it is a gem in America. This is a beautiful city, and I'm honored to be able to be a part of it and to serve. And I appreciate everything that I've heard here tonight. Really, thank you for being here and for sharing your concerns. I wanna ask the commission tonight to take to heart everything that's been said, but also to take a step back and remember what is being asked for tonight. All we're asking for is to have this land rezoned for the potential of more discussion, more facilitation, more conversation as we move forward. But in order for us to even consider and to move forward with the communication, we need to have this land rezoned. That, that has nothing to do with what goes on after that. So, there's a lot of other processes that take, has to take place.
Please, 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 please.
We, we were quiet for all of you, at least I was, and I really appreciate what you have to say. This is my true feeling as a, somebody who is raising my children here as well. This community, this Basilica of St. Mary community, for 25 years before I got there, and for the past 25 years, has been serving this community, I've seen it firsthand. I've met many of you in our church, for, you, you asked to come and, and visit our parish, and see what this place is all about, and I greatly enjoy that. I meet many of you at our community events, and I meet a lot of the seniors in this event every single year for the past 20 years, as we host, as many of you know, a Thanksgiving dinner for close to 400 to 500 people every single year for Thanksgiving. We host for free a community center, not for the homeless, not for the needy, but just for the seniors, the elderly, the veterans, and the orphans when we have the opportunity. So, thank you so much, but please, consider what, where we're at right now. We're just asking for rezoning, there's a lot of, of process that, from my understanding, that has to go on after that. And so, it sounds like there is willingness to consider different options back there. But we need to have the land rezoned so that we can continue the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Father King.
Frances Janus, 17439 Sunset, Livonia. A lot of people have already addressed what I had written out originally. The flooding was something I had, but that's been addressed. Light pollution, that's been addressed. I'm also mom to a nine-year-old son that attends Coolidge Elementary. And we only moved here about a year ago, and he has been involved in an ecological club where they actually took samples of the stream out there. There is a lot of runoff from road salt in that stream. And I think the best thing I could say is a song that we were listening to this week. "They paved paradise, and they put up a parking lot." Please vote no on this, please, for our kids. Thank you.
Good evening, ma'am.
My name's Ellen Kuzing, I live at 31098 Bobridge Street. Wasn't gonna speak, but after hearing the gentleman speak earlier about just go ahead and approve it, and we'll see what happens, no, I'm sorry, that land, we found out by reading The Observer, after it happened, that it had been sold. It was not even told to us many years ago. Then, if I didn't have a good neighbor who happened to find out that this was going on, I would not be here, I would not know anything until it was done again. That's how we're finding out. I've lived at that, right there in Livonia, for 30 years there, and the rest of my life has been over at Merriman &amp; Joy. My whole life has been in Livonia. Livonia's supposed to be for the people, for the families. If we're taking away green space, what's left? What is the draw? Why, why come to Livonia? Okay? I, I mean, it's, I just feel like we're being blindsided, and something's not right. Even the sign that goes and says that this is being proposed, it's white, snow out, black ladders. It's by the entrance, the first, the southern entrance to the original church, whatever they wanna call it. Okay?
It's a church.
I'm sorry, I do not know that, what it is now.
Ma'am, ma'am, please, please-
I know it used to be a church.
Focus on him, Ms.
Well, he was talking to me. So, it wasn't even in a position, it could've been placed, that we were planning on doing this, put it by the stoplight, so when you're there, "Oh, what's going on? I'm interested, I'm gonna take a look at that." No, it was hidden, it wasn't even put by the entrance to the Old Bryant School, where you could pull in there and say, "Oh, what's this sign up for?" So, I'm very concerned about, there is not transparency for what I'm seeing. So, going ahead and just approving and see what happens in the future, I'm not comfortable with that.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, my name is Brian Smith, I live at 30126 Brookview Drive. I wasn't gonna speak tonight, but I, after listening to everybody, I feel it'd be a dereliction of my duty as a citizen not to. My mother was pregnant with me when they moved into my house in 1960. They're both, my mother and father in heaven now, but I bought the house from them. It's the only house I've ever lived in. I'm the third guy on my side of the street that is still living in their parents' house. That's incredible. And it speaks to the quality of life, and part of that is that field. As the young lady said here earlier, children fly kites, men fly radio-controlled airplanes, children launch rockets as science projects, dogs play fetch. There's a trail system that goes along the Terabusi, well, you can call it a floodplain or, or a wetland, I don't really know, but there's a trail system that runs along there. This proposal that sits before us would actually seal off four trailheads. I don't even know if you guys are aware of that, but there's four trailheads leading down to that creek. I feel sorry for the folks on the south elevation. We've heard people tonight say that there's an issue with noise and light pollution already, which I wasn't even aware of, and I don't live on the south elevation, but the north elevation is what I wanna talk about tonight, because that's the one that's facing the woods and the Terabusi Creek. I know that Bryant Field, which I still call it- I know that Bryant Field, which I still call it, I've been going on those trails since I attended Coolidge. That was a few years ago. But there's a lot of deer that live in those trails. I've seen them, they've face-to-face on those trails. And I just think that sealing off access is not the way to go. So I would encourage you to not to approve this proposal as it stands. I think it would have a devastating effect on our property values and our quality of life, which really makes Livonia special. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Tom Earl. I live at 31545 Penbrook Street. It's been a long haul for me. It's back in seventy-six when I moved to Livonia. I really love this community. At the beginning of this meeting, you said you were going to focus on zoning. I understand that's very important. However, zoning actually has to take in effect many other things about what can be built there. I think you should table this discussion until you can get some major studies done on this property. I think it's a wonderful plan that the priest wants to do with this community. But I hear a lot of questions. And one of the biggest questions I hear about is, how are you going to take care of your drainage? That is an engineering thing. You can't change the engineering just because you changed the zoning. You have to understand what that zoning does, what can you do with the land with the engineering that you have to do. Now, there's ways of creating flood plains. It can be in the ground, it can be above the ground. But those are type of things that you should be finding out before you rezone it, in my humble opinion. There is other issues with the lights and other things that you want to discuss. Those normally can be done with a simple changing of lighting. But it hasn't been done before. So you don't have the trust that you would have if you had that up front. And that's what I'm hearing, even though it's not my neighborhood, it's still my city.
Sure.
And I think that should be answered first before you rezone it. So take a chance, and due diligence, that you might be in better off shape. And like I said, I like what the priest had to say.
Thank you, Mr. Earl.
Have a nice day.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. I wasn't planning on talking. My name is Sue Hanstead, 30546 Brookview Drive. My husband has already spoke, and I've heard a lot of good comments both ways. But I want to bring up the fact that we are just one house away from this field. So it influences us and affects us greatly. And when you talk about being a good neighbor, I would just like to know, there are many public areas in Livonia that are empty, that have been vacated. Why don't we look at something like that to be a good neighbor? If we really want another resource and another senior center, look at something like that where it's not in the single home area. That's all I'm going to say. I hope you vote no.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Diana, and I am a resident of Livonia, 14179 Cranston Street. And I would like to add my voice to Father Jim and Father George and the last gentleman here. They sounded very wisdom. I'm going to ask you the same thing, to think about it in a wise way, because we have a lot of people here, including myself, who are looking forward for this center when we grow old, or housing, I don't know the exact wording, but you know what it means, to live there when we're older. We are looking forward for it. We love Livonia. We've been living here in Livonia for a while. My kids go to Livonia. And the community is wonderful, and the church is also wonderful. We have a big parishioner number. And you should not be afraid from a church if they're not going to zone right or do right, because it could be, this could be a chance for the engineering problems to be actually solved and have the water issue resolved. So that could be a potential. So if that, you know, if you don't want to vote yes, at least wait for all the studies to be done, and hopefully that will be solved, and the marketing value will come up, because we have the best neighbor and the best city. And we make the market value, the people make it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Beverly Vines. I live at 30547 Bobridge Street. Again, I was not planning to speak tonight, but I feel like I need to at least ask that you set this aside, deny the rezoning tonight, think about the impact it has. I've heard "love your neighbor" quite a bit. "Love your neighbor" does not take your backyard or public land away from somebody. "Love your neighbor" is doing what's best for them. I'm pretty sure that perhaps any of your members or any of the other people that live in Livonia or on any boards, if this was proposed, that it would happen to their backyard, that they would, you would probably feel a little bit differently about it. I am compassionate for older people. As my husband stated, we moved our parents in, we took care of them in their house, we did everything that we could. There are ways to take care of our elders, and I strongly believe in taking care of our older people. But it cannot be, in my mind, a way to take away from families that have had public land in their backyard. That just seems not appropriate, doesn't seem fair to those people that are living there. I see the vision, it's a strong, it's a good vision, but I think it needs to be dealt with in a different way and not take people's backyards from them and public land. Thank you for listening, appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm not really nervous earlier. Can I finish what I wanted to originally say?
I'll give you, I'll give you a minute if you can, please.
Okay. So, Ivy Architect.
Please introduce yourself.
Amelia Vilke, 31716 Curtis. So Ivy Architect, an architectural firm, knows that there's a process of design that goes, and primarily, there's seven steps of the process. The first is the pre-design, which is to conduct research and collect information. So local zoning, land use restrictions, project scope, client desires, scale, surrounding buildings, neighborhood, site conditions, building codes, and more. The second is then the development of the designs, and that means developing the design proposal, creating site plans, floor planes, building elevations, structural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. We have not seen those. Only on the fifth process do you go to the city and present your proposal. That is known, and that has not been done. There has been a miss in so many steps, and it makes this project very questionable. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir.
Just briefly, Salem Saman. I've been a resident of Livonia for fifty-seven years, and I'm also a member of the parish. I'm the legal advisor of the parish, and I'm also the chairman, or one of the co-chairmen of the Samarian project. I've heard a lot of things tonight, and I appreciate everything that everybody had to say. I appreciate the fact that some people feel emotional about what's happening. But when I hear things about, you know, what you need to do first, this is zoning. After this happens, there's no way or no reason for you guys to approve the site plan or the project. When do you start actually doing the work that has been talked about? Once we get to that point, we have to get the engineering done, we have to get the water issue taken care of. There's many things that would have to happen before we come back before you, for you to be able to say, okay, yes or no. And that decision is up to you. If you don't agree with what's going to be constructed, you get to say no. This is not the time, I think we're putting the cart before the horse here. We're saying, well, we don't have all the plans, all the studies. How can we do any studies if we don't have the zoning to move forward with these studies, to get it done and move forward? So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Saman.
My name's Monica Souchere. I live at 31413 Curtis Road. Only question I have is, how many three- and four-story buildings do we have in Livonia, and how many in residential areas? As far as I see, I drive around, I see very few. The last one I know of went into McDonough University, and that was a dorm. And actually, McDonough University sent notes to all the neighbors, three, four, five miles across from them, asking if it is okay. Number two, how many private schools have we just put in this year? I believe we've put two charter schools in, am I correct?
I'm not sure.
So every public, for every public school we put into our city is saying we have no confidence in our public schools. I, it drives me nuts, that part drives me nuts, because I'm very pro-public, and we're losing students, and where are they going? You know, so that's another thing to take in consideration. And right now, they have a Montessori, there's been a sign up for three, four years. I don't even know if they fill that Montessori. And right now, they can say one to five, how do you know it doesn't go one to high school? We don't know that, that they could change that. And we also have, what, fifty million, what did we spend for our rec center? And we also have programs for all our children, for all our seniors, for all people that are handicapped, everything we have on our own. So that's all I've got to say. I'm a hyper person, excuse me.
It's hard.
And I like you over there, I like you a lot. I noticed you last time, I go, oh my God, go to nice face. Bye.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? I think we've given everyone a good shot. If everyone can please quiet down a little bit, now we're going to give an opportunity for the petitioner to come forward and address any issues that they would like to. Again, we're not going to engage in a debate back and forth, but we do always give our petitioner the last word. So if they would like to add anything from what they've heard, answer any questions, or address any issues that were raised, this is the time to do it.
Once again, this is very helpful. It's bringing to light question that we are not aware of it. When we had the grand broken ceremony, because the bishop was in town, we didn't build. We did not have the right to send announcement to the neighbor. It's the city's job. So when you say that, and where's the sign is? The sign is on our property, we cannot put it on Bryan Junior High School. We are not here to debate what everyone has said. All what I'm saying, that all these concern will be answered and will be bound by law as a city of Livonia, whether the zoning commission, the city, the police, because the best advocate for all of us is you. The police, the fire marshal, the traffic, and all of them, they will not violate the law that we stand. And I appeal to you to, that we can vote for it, and we can work together in the future, because this meeting, as much as we maybe differ and disagree, we all have saying the same thing. So who's going to decide one over the other? We're here, we're listening. I sat down here for two and a half hours, and I, it seems to me I'm the one who's been attacked and distrusted, and talking about trust and not trust.
It's free speech.
Yes, well, thank you. We are, give me, give me, give me the time to speak. Don't answer without, don't interrupt me. I did not interrupt you.
Please.
When we talk about constitution, we're not talking about the constitution of the nation, we're talking about the constitution of our addresses. So I am here to work with you to any proposal, to any modification, to any change that will bring this project to fruition. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. I'm going to go to our commissioners and see if there's any questions that they have, either for our planning staff or for the petitioner. Is there any questions from any of our commissioners based on the information we've heard so far?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Long.
The plan for the school, I've heard differing age groups for the school, what would be the, if you, if you built the school, what would be the grade levels that attended that school?
Could you speak louder, please?
It's actually, the ages, oh, yeah. Can I answer that?
Well, so, first of all, my question, sorry, I wasn't close enough to the microphone, but my question was, what would be the age group for the schools?
One to five. It's a Montessori school. It's age one through five. One-year-old to five-year-old.
So it's essentially, you're talking to preschool.
So basically, it's, it's just, there's no kindergarten, there's no first, second grade, it's just, it's one through five, period. Not grades, but age group.
So after five years old, then they would attend a different school?
Gay off, whatever. You know, we don't deal with them after that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any other questions from any of our commissioners, for our petitioner? I do want to thank everyone in the audience for your comments. Obviously, there was a lot of comments that we received, there's a lot of information that we're taking in, and there's a lot of issues that were raised, and we appreciate everyone's thoughts and comments on this issue, both for and against. Mr. Torme, I did have just a couple of questions based on some of the information that we heard. There was discussion about this remaining public land. This property, as I understand it, is not public land. It was purchased by the church when it was sold by the school district some years ago. Is that correct?
It's my understanding, St. Mary's or, an affiliate of St. Mary's, is the owner of the property in question, that they own it. It's no, it is not owned by Livonia Public Schools.
Okay. And the public land zoning is kind of a unique zoning in our choices of zoning, in the sense that it's dedicated strictly to land that is owned by governmental entities such as a school, city, and perhaps some other municipalities. Is that correct?
No, it does not preclude land being owned by a private corporation, firm, or person, but the use itself needs to be authorized and licensed for public service or public use.
Okay. So that explains what the purpose of public land is. Okay. Okay. And the other question was in regards to the master plan. What does the master plan say this property's designation is?
Well, as I indicated, as I indicated in my opening remarks, the community designation, flood plain designation, really reflects, or the public land designation, really reflects the prior ownership by LPS. The master plan also has a category called flood plain, and that recognizes that a substantial portion of the property is in fact a regulated flood plain area.
Okay. All right, thank you. That was a couple hours ago, so you need to refresh my memory. Thank you. Is there anyone else with any questions for either the petitioner, for our planning staff, or the commission? If not...
Mr. Chair, I've got a question.
Sure, Mr. Chairman.
Mark, if this were to get changed to zoning for the high-rise, multi-story apartment complex, if it were to go down that road, could the school, and anything can happen, I understand, could the school potentially sell the rest of that land? And is there a precedent to build apartments on that property for a developer then?
If what you're saying is that this is approved, and an apartment building is constructed on the property, and then at some future date, LPS decides to sell additional land, would that open up the door potentially? would that open up the door potentially for additional, similar type of development? I would say it, it would probably, the decisions that would be made by the city would recognize those adjoining land uses as probably being compatible to some extent. But each case is going to have to be reviewed on its own separate merits, and now we're talking about different property, different, different impacts to the surrounding area. So, it doesn't set a precedent, I would say.
You say it does or does not?
It would not, but I think it would, it could potentially influence, to some extent, the future use.
So, if you've got, if you've got a hundred home apartment buildings sitting there, and the school sells the rest of that property to a developer, they say, hey, listen, there's already an apartment building there. I want to put twelve more of these things now.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think it doesn't, it doesn't guarantee that by any means.
No, of course not. But it puts you in a bad position. It could put you in a bad position. So, okay, thank, thank you, Mark.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Caremagnow. Any other questions from any of our commissioners? Mr. Care, Mr. Tormina is, kind of to play off Mr. Caremagnow's question slightly, in terms of, and it was raised by one of our residents, Mr. Condon, raised the issue of if this property is rezoned, and I'm speaking specifically of the NM3-1, the high-rise section of the property, if it's rezoned to that zoning, and the church decides to not go forward with this project, that zoning will stay with that property, and it could potentially be sold off by the church to a private developer who would already have that zoning secured, and then they could present a site plan to build something on that property privately outside of the church's project. Is that correct?
It's possible. I mean, once the zoning is in place.
Okay.
It doesn't guarantee, you know, what the ownership is. That's not, that's not the purpose of zoning. And it does provide the framework for what can be developed on that property. So, yes, I mean theoretically, what you're saying could occur.
Right. The guarantee that we've heard so far tonight is that it's the church's constitution. There are internal documents and processes that prevent, preclude them from being able to sell the property. But there's, there's no, is there a guarantee that we can incorporate into this process anywhere to prevent that?
The only, the only way that could happen would be through a conditional zoning agreement. That is something that council would have to entertain. And the conditions upon which the zoning would be affected would have to be a voluntary offering by the church. So, the church would have to present that to the city council, and the city council could consider that for approval. But it's not something that either this body or the council can impose upon the development. It would have to be voluntary.
Right.
If it were to be a conditional zoning agreement as specified in the statute.
So, the property owner themselves, which in this case is the church, would be able to say that they're willing to condition the zoning, that it would be only for their, their use, and then if the property's not used by them for that process, it would, the zoning would revert back to its former use, and that that would be an offer that they would have to make to us. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, and we'd have to confer with our legal department to make sure that they would agree with that, but we've done similar type of agreements in the past. So, I believe it is possible.
Okay. Okay. That's the only question I had at the moment. Is there anything from anyone else again? Mr. Long?
Mark, with some of the other rezonings that we've had, maybe to a commercial status, I believe that the zoning doesn't necessarily go for a vote with city council until a site plan, it kind of gets coupled with a site plan. Am I correct with that? Or do they always do a zoning first and then come back for...
Typically, what will happen is, once this body makes its recommendation, city council will then have a similar, same type of structured public hearing, and if, at that time, they decide to move forward, there would be a first reading given to the zoning. So, it basically announces the fact that the city is in the process of changing the zoning of the property, but it doesn't commit to that change at that point. What happens then is the, for lack of a better term, is city council puts the brakes on the zoning process, allows the petitioner then to file the site plan. That's the time when we're going to get into all of the details associated with the project, whether it's lighting and engineering and flooding and our stormwater detention. All of these things are addressed as part of the site plan review. When this body reviews that and makes a recommendation, and it goes to council, council then has a similar review of the details of the site plan, and then the final step in the process is the second reading and roll call vote on the zoning, followed by a vote on the site plan. So, that typically happens at the, as part of, as the final step in the process. But you're right, the, the action to rezone the property typically does not occur until such time that the council has the full plan, the plan has been fully considered.
And so, if that process were followed, or here as well, you would have the same type of thing. It would be given a first reading, but until a site plan would come through on this, the zoning would not be officially changed until the site plan, if that same process were held on this.
That is correct. So, the zoning is really an amendment to the zone, it's an amendment to the zoning ordinance and zoning map. And that process requires publication, and that publication, after the final reading, the second reading and roll call, doesn't occur until after the site plan has been reviewed and approved.
Thank you. Thank you for that procedural clarification. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Long. And I appreciate you bringing that issue up. It is kind of a complex process that happens here at the city when it comes to rezonings and the first reading and second reading that happen at council, and those are terms that not everyone in the audience or the community are necessarily familiar with, or it's a process that they don't necessarily see on a daily basis in their day-to-day lives. So, it's good to understand that it is fairly typical in the city for zoning, as it goes to city council, to be held essentially until the site plan catches up to it. And so, it's not often that you will see zoning change in the city without some sort of a detailed site plan right behind it at the exact same meeting. So, just on, just so people understand that process a little bit more thorough, I appreciate your asking those questions. And the other thing to keep in mind is, for the folks in our audience, zoning and site plans are two very distinctly different processes, and as we make whatever recommendation we make, city council doesn't necessarily agree with our recommendations. They sometimes will deny a request that we approve of in our recommendation. There's times that we make a denying request or recommendation, and city council will make an approving recommendation. Or there's also the scenario of a petitioner requesting a particular zoning use, such as, I'm going to just use the example in this case of a NM3-1, which allows a four-story building, and we or the city council may only approve a lesser zoning, a more restrictive zoning. Is that correct, Mr. Tormina? That that happens on occasion?
That is correct.
So, 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 things, things can be, there's a lot of, there's a lot of different paths that this can go on. It's the whole point of what I'm trying to say to both our folks here that are in the audience watching this, and also online and on TV. So, just wanted to make those comments. If there's no other questions or comments from any of our commissioners, then I will close the public hearing. Any motion is in order. And this is where the silence happens.
Mr. Chairman, you know, we've, we've listened to a lot of different voices here tonight, and came into this with an open mind because I wanted to hear what everybody had to say. I, I cannot myself get behind the multi-story, the three-story zoning for that part of the parcel. I can get behind a compromise zoning that would, would be the, the N2, which would allow the, it's, it's a neighborhood, it would not allow the, the multi-story building to be built, but it would allow the school to be built. So, I will offer up a approving resolution for N2 only. This request would rezone the property at 18100 Merriman Road, per the legal description submitted with the application from PL Public Lands. To N2 neighborhood, it's approved, subject to city council approval for the following reasons. The proposed N2 district is compatible with the surrounding land uses and zoning districts. This current PL district is intended for uses or facilities that furnish governmental services to the public. The proposed N2 district will provide for the development of the subject property in a manner that is appropriate for its size and location. The proposed zoning change will allow the development of an educational academy that will provide needed services for the Basilica and the surrounding area, and the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future land use plans, goals, policies, and objectives.
Is there support?
Support.
There is a motion that's been put on the floor to approve the N2 portion of the zoning request only. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Caremagnow.
I share in Mr. Long's opposition to a high-rise building, apartment complex. I have concern, from what I heard earlier, I'm not opposed to the alternate in the school building, but I did hear very clearly earlier that the church is not interested in a split decision on this. I don't know if they've changed their mind or will change their mind based upon this vote, but I heard it pretty clearly earlier that it's, it's all or nothing, is what I heard. So, I mean, I'm willing to go through with the vote, but I don't know if we should ask them if they're interested in this or not before we vote on it.
Well, I, normally, we don't go back to the petitioner in the middle of a, of a motion, but if the...
And we don't, and we don't have to, but I'm just, I heard it pretty clearly said earlier that it's all or nothing. They're not interested in a partial.
Well, this is the, this is the motion that has been made, so this is what will, if approved, will go on to city council, and if they want something else, they can present something else to either us or city council at that point. We're making a recommendation for the N2.
Does that happen now, or...
This is a, this is a request just to approve the N2 zoning only.
Okay. Yeah. If I may, I guess to answer Mr. Caremagnow's question, I guess the follow-up question would be, would there be a subsequent consideration for the other part of the request? So...
Can't hear you.
Question is whether or not there would be a subsequent consideration for the balance of the request. So, you're, you're only addressing the N2 portion of the petition at this point. I don't know if it's the intent of the commission to then address the NM3-1 request as a separate part of the resolution, or as a separate resolution.
Mr. Long?
Thank you. Mr. Tormina, can you put the map back up on it? It's okay. We've been here a long time, and we have screensavers and timeouts.
Yeah. So, what's your, if I may...
So, on the map, right there, the L-shaped parcel is, is suggested here to go from PL to N2, and that was the area where they wanted to place the school, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So, my motion refers only to the L-shaped parcel and does not touch the public land that was requested to go to NM3, 3-1.
Understood.
Okay. And so, therefore, you know, I guess I'm not touching that with my motion. I guess we could, I don't know, the rules of procedure is whether we could take that separately or, or what, but my intent, the intent of my proposal here was to just offer up the school.
So, if the commission decides to vote on that, then there, the question will be, will there be a second? I think we should still address, you still need to address the other, the balance of the request, whether it's a denial or a tabling or an alternate zoning classification, because that is part of the request. But you can, you can bifurcate the resolutions.
Yeah, the petition before us is for both pieces, so we should address them either positively or negatively in some form or another.
Correct.
And certainly, alternative motions are also available to be put on the floor if someone wishes to do that, and we could vote on that. That doesn't happen very often.
But you could vote on this portion now, and then...
So, we would vote on mine first and then move forward.
Right. We can vote on, on your motion, and then we'll allow for another motion to be put on the floor for the remaining parcel if someone's willing to make that motion.
Okay.
Is that okay to the maker of this motion?
That's okay to the maker of this motion.
Okay.
Or we can deny this and we start over if, if that's what my colleagues prefer. Thank you.
All right. Is there any more discussion on this motion, which again is to only approve the N2 portion of the, of the zoning? Any other questions, comments? If not, if the secretary is ready, please call a roll.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Bonjero?
Aye.
Mrs. Dinaro?
Nay.
Caremagnow says yes. Chairman Willschuh?
Vote's aye. Motion passes. That will, again, this is an approving recommendation that will go on to city council. We do have an opportunity now for any additional motions to be made on this.
I'm going to motion to table it.
Okay. Ms. Dinaro is making a motion to table the remaining portion, which is the NM3 portion, I guess we're going to call that, NM3-1, I should say. Is there support for a tabling motion?
Support.
All right. There is a motion made by Mrs. Dinaro, supported by Mr. Bonjero. There is no discussion on tabling motions, unfortunately.
Okay.
So, I will go to the secretary to call the roll.
Let me catch up here real quick. It was Dinaro, who, Law?
Dinaro and Bonjero. And before you call the roll, I just want to ask Ms. Dinaro a clarifying question of, are you setting a date certain or an open-ended?
I think open-ended for now.
Okay.
I think there's some, Mark's raising his...
Table to be determined, Mr. Tormina?
No, we, in this case, we would have to act on the petition within a certain timeframe, and I apologize, I don't have that, but I believe it's 60 days from the point in time which is determined that the application is complete. So, it would most likely have to appear at our, probably the next meeting.
Okay. So, we'll go to our next study.
Unless the petitioner is willing to push it back. So, that, that's the other option.
Okay. All right. So, it seems like the most prudent date would be to put our next regular public meeting. Is that acceptable to you?
I suppose.
You're the maker of the motion, so we have a tabling to our next regularly scheduled meeting, and that will give the, we can ask our planning department if they want to talk to the petitioner about, or figure out if that date is within our guidelines. Is there, well, there is no discussion on tabling, so, Mr. Secretary, are you caught up?
I think so. Mrs. Dinaro?
Call the roll.
Yes.
Mr. Bonjero?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
I would rather keep this all together, even if with a denial here, so I will say no to the tabling motion.
Caremagnow says no. Chairman Willschuh, make the shot.
I'll vote aye. Motion is tabled. That is going to be, Mr. Tormina, what's the date of our next regular meeting, so we can give that to our...
February 14.
February 14th. So, you're welcome back then.
Enjoying some Valentine's Day.
No.
Valentine's Day.
No.
Is it two?
You just ruined my Valentine's Day. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. We do have one more item, too. That meeting will be here.
You're not going to show up?
No, it's a regular meeting. Study meetings are, we have a study meeting before that. Yeah, so it'll be regular. Yeah.
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
No, we're not, we're not...
No, I've seen your name many times over the...
No, I've seen your name many times over the, over the years.
Folks, we do have one more item on our agenda, so if you can please give us a chance. All right, folks, we have one more item on our agenda, which is going to be item number two, which I'll read out, since we don't have a secretary at the moment. It's petition 2022, 1202, submitted by EROP LLC requesting waiver use approval pursuant to section 6.07 of Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance as amended in conjunction with a proposal to redevelop the site, including demolishing the existing restaurant Archie's and constructing a new automated car wash facility known as Whitewater Express at 30471 Plymouth Road located on the south side of Plymouth Road between Middlebelt and Milburn on the northwest quarter of section 35.
Could you please push them on?
Mr. Tormina?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a waiver use request involving the redevelopment of the former Archie's Restaurant. This is located on the south side of Plymouth Road between Merriman and Middlebelt Roads. The property, as you can see, is zone C2 general business. The site is roughly one and three-quarters acres in area, it has 125 feet of road frontage. The existing restaurant is just under 6,000 square feet, located in the, on the front part of the property. There are two driveways that provide access to the site. Restaurants have operated at this location since the late 1960s. To the east, west, and north of the property is commercial zoning, and then to the south are residential homes that are part of the Devonshire Park subdivision. The restaurant would be demolished and a new automated car wash constructed. The car wash building itself would be about 3,700 square feet in size and would be built in the same general location as the existing restaurant building. Ingress and egress would continue to be provided from the two existing driveways. The west driveway would accommodate two-way traffic, whereas the east driveway, which is directly in front of the exit to the car wash, would be for, for exiting vehicles only, so it would not allow for two-way tra, um, traffic coming from Plymouth Road. There is a 24-foot wide drive aisle on the west side of the site that would provide access to the car wash. As this drive continues further south on the property, it would widen to allow for three pay kiosks. So this, this plan is a little different than the one you viewed at the study session. After paying, the three lanes tapered to form a single 12-foot wide lane that then turns and heads east for a short distance before turning north in a U-shaped pattern to the entrance to the car wash, which is at the south end of the building. These point-of-sales kiosks would contain digital menu boards and self-serve pay stations, and they would be covered with overhead canopies. Automated gates that are just beyond the pay kiosks would control vehicle access, and there's a 12-foot wide escape line that would be provided before entering the car wash. Parking is available or would be available in the area between the building and the main drive aisle, so as customers exit the car wash, they would have the option of looping back around to access the facility's parking lot and vacuums, which are on the west side of the building. The building itself would be set back 57 feet from the right-of-way of Plymouth Road, 262 feet from the residential property lines to the south. There's a requirement in the ordinance that there be at least 20 parking spaces. This plan shows 24 stalls. 19 of those 24 stalls would be equipped with the self-serve vacuums. The five, the five remaining stalls, which are in the southwest corner of the lot, would be for employees. I think the previous plan we looked at showed four spaces for that purpose, but, but that's been increased to five. There's a, an easement on the west side, that, those five spaces shown within that parking easement would actually be used by the Midas, so that's something that I think has been ongoing for, for some time now. Building materials on the building itself include half-high concrete blocks, so masonry product, fiber cement panels up on the upper portion of the tower element to the building. There are, as you can see, a few small windows that would be installed on both sides of the building. The front and rear elevations do contain overhead doors, as you would expect for the entrance and exit to the, to the facility. This is a one-story structure, so its, its maximum height would be 23 and a half feet. There's a dumpster enclosure shown on the site that would contain six-foot-high surrounding walls and would be constructed of brick veneer to match the, the design of the building. All stormwater runoff would be detained underground. Landscaping has been addressed. From the standpoint of the frontage, it's showing two full-stride trees, one ordermill tree, and 16 shrubs. They've now added the PRDA streetscape improvement, so added to this most recent plan is a section of decorative fencing and masonry piers, identical to what the PRDA maintains along Plymouth Road, so that's about 45 feet in length, as I indicated. So, at the south end of the property, where it butts residential, the green belt has been widened to 50 feet. The screening here includes an existing five-foot-high masonry wall. Just adjacent to that wall is a three-to-four-foot-high berm that is planted with mature evergreen trees, and then additional trees and other plantings would be provided, including six eastern red cedar trees, two red bud, red bud trees, one honey locust, and 15 deciduous shrubs. So I think part of the concern expressed at the study meeting was, while it's landscaped nicely today, those are very mature trees, and, you know, there's an opportunity, once that green belt is widened, to provide additional plantings. Some additional plantings have been provided, and the commission can determine whether or not they feel that that's adequate at this point. Site lighting, again, nine pole-mounted fixtures and 13 wall sconces. The photometric plan has been revised such that the average level of illumination across the site has gone down from 3.43 to one-foot candle, and that is consistent now with the standard in the zoning ordinance. Terms of signage, they would be allowed one sign, wall sign, 31 square feet in area, as well as a, a ground sign, 30 square feet. And that is, that's it for my presentation. Mr. Chair, I have correspondence.
Sure, go ahead.
And I should have had it ready to go. We have a letter from the treasurer with no objections, that's signed by Linda Scheel, dated January 5th. Another letter of no objection coming from the Department of Finance dated December 15th and signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. The inspection department notes that signage must be in accordance with the ordinance or a variance from the ZBA required. That letter is dated January 17th and signed by Jerome Hanna, Director of Inspection. A letter of no objection coming from the Division of Police Public Safety, signed by Scott Chapansky, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau, and that's dated December 19th. Another letter from Public Safety, this time from the Livonia Fire and Rescue, dated January 10th, indicating that they have no objections, that a further detailed plan review will take place when this division receives an official plan set. That is signed by Brian Kukla, Fire Marshal. And then lastly, from our engineering department, dated December 9th, it reads, "The existing parcel is currently serviced by utilities. They're unable to comment, comment on the impacts to the existing system until design calculations are provided during the design and permitting submittals, and that any work within the Plymouth Road right-of-way will require the owner to obtain permits with the Michigan Department of Transportation." And that letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer, and that is the extent of the correspondence.
Thank you, Mr. Tormina. Any questions for our planning staff? If not, our petitioner is here tonight. Welcome.
Good evening, guys. Thank you for staying so late. My name is Erin McMacan. I'm a civil engineer with Stonefield Engineering and Design. We're at 607 Shelby Street, Suite 200 in Detroit, Michigan. And thank you, Mark, for giving a great summary of the project. I really just wanted to hit on the revisions we made since last week. We took all of your comments to heart, presented them to Whitewater, and they didn't hesitate, and we want to comply with them all. I kind of hear in Mark's voice that maybe the landscaping at the rear wasn't enough, and we're always happy to add more landscaping. That's kind of one of the points on Whitewater's website. If you guys have checked them out, they actually pride themselves in their landscaping and because, you know, their customers are a priority to them and they want them to be repeat customers. That's how they keep business, and so they'd be happy to provide more landscaping. But I think Mark hit that we've addressed all comments from last week, and we would be happy to answer any other questions from you all or anyone else here to comment.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for our petitioner, Mr. Dinaro?
Sure. It looks so much better. This is, this is great. My, remind me again, I know you, you told us in the study session what the timeline is on, like, the becoming operational.
Uh, yes, so we would probably start construction this summer. You know, we still have to go to city council and go through our building permitting. We don't have a building permit plan set yet, so that would be a couple of months. They should be able to wrap up construction by the fall. The site's all concrete, so that allows them to do pavement a little more into those winter months. And they use sod for their landscaping. They won't open a car wash without the sod in place because they don't want dirt flying around, so if they can get sod in place by the end of summer, I would anticipate them being open in the fall.
Great.
Thank you, Ms. Dinaro. Any other questions for our petitioner? No other questions for our petitioner? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against? We have one person that would like to come forward.
May it's the end.
Thank you for sticking around.
All this for this, right? Ryan, my, my name's Ryan Jones. Address is 30572 Elmira. I am just about a house over from where the back, back of this property will go. A couple of the neighbors and I have talked about if there's going to be any water pressure issues, just because of coming from the car wash, pollutions, car emissions, all that kind of stuff with our backyard's budding right up to the property. I have three little girls at home that were always outside, so that was just a, brand-new car washes. I think there was one in Westland that just went up, lines like down the street, always with a brand-new car wash. They always, they always come up and they're always super busy, so that was just something that we had talked about. The noise, especially with vacuums going on, I'm not sure, I saw that map, I wasn't sure where they had put the vacuums. I'd, I'd been a part of, like, Matic Auto Wash was over by, like, Telegraph in 96. Vacuums were, I mean, I could, I could stop there pretty much any time of the day those vacuums were going. So just to, now that it's in my backyard, it's a question I have. So the time of operation, I don't know if that was stated, what the hours were going to be.
They mentioned at our study meeting that it was going to be seven days a week, eight to eight.
Eight to eight?
I don't know if that's changed or not.
Okay.
I'm still seeing nodding, so, yeah.
So-
Seven days a week.
The, you know, the, the, that line, so those, that fence that's there is like a four-foot block wall right now? And did they say something about a berm? Is that what, because those lights are going to, there's parking lot back there, when Archie's, when Archie's was a little bit more busy than they are now, those lights would shine right into the backyard from Midas and from Archie's. So that was, that was a point of concern that we had with, especially if they're open at eight, winter time, that means they're from 4:30 up until closing time, there's going to be lights shining right in the backyard. The car washes in Livonia, I, like, 15 in county, I can throw a stone in any direction and hit a car wash. So that was, like, I saw, there was actually a, a plan in place for six and, was it six in New, no, I think it was six in Newburgh that got shot down.
Correct.
So that was, I don't know if we're just trying to stuff one in a spot, another one in Livonia. There's, I can count, I think there's five on Plymouth Road alone, between Newburgh and Middlebelt. So that's kind of what, you know, if we're, between the chicken places and the car washes, I feel like we're in an episode of Breaking Bad. So the, I just, there's, there's so many of them, I feel like it's just another one that's coming in here. So the, the last thing was the shrubs in the back. So they actually, the dealership has that parking lot right there to the left. They actually cut down all the trees there because they didn't want to deal with the vines that were growing in the trees. So I don't, though, all those trees along that line are pretty much infested with, they're, they're not doing well. So I don't know, that lush comment, I don't know who, who said that they're lush, but they're, they're struggling, evergreen trees that are below the power lines. So if not for DTE trimming them, they're, they're, they're not doing well. So I don't know if they're planning, I, I know you guys did say something about adding a lot more landscape, so that would be a plus, but that's, that's a plus with a lot of, a lot of negatives. So I, I just want to put my two cents in, since we are right there, and appreciate you guys' time.
Definitely, thank you, Mr. Jones. Anyone else in our audience wishing to speak on this item? I don't see anyone else. You get the final word, Ms. McCacken?
McMacan, yeah.
Ms. Macan, thanks.
So just to address everything you said, and I am happy it came out, you know, Whitewater does want to be a good neighbor, they don't want to be anywhere they're not wanted. You know, good to know about those trees on the west side of the property. You know, if they're not in good health, they will certainly provide a continuous evergreen hedge there of trees, because that was the intent of this plan, you know, showing the existing trees, and if they're not healthy, we'll certainly replace them, and we can note that on our plans. Just to touch a bit on operations, you know, noise from the vacuums is certainly always a concern. If you look on either side of the bypass lane, those are where the central housing systems are located and where majority of the noise comes from, and those are behind a six-foot masonry wall, identical to the trash enclosure, to help buffer that sound as well as all the landscaping on-site. And I guess, you know, a good comparison that we give is, you know, from a residential property, they wouldn't be any louder than the traffic on Plymouth Road, which is why, you know, our car wash sites are always on a busier road. And in terms of traffic, the site has more than enough stacking on-site than what our tenant requires. I think we show about 20 spaces, but there's room for 30-plus spaces. Our tenant requires 18 stacking spaces on a busy day, and to also combat those busy days, they can control the speed of the conveyor. They keep it at a slow speed to provide the best wash, but if there is a super busy day and cars are, you know, down the line, they have the ability to increase the speed of that conveyor and move cars through more quickly, as well as having the 19 vacuums on-site to provide their customers with that free service and, and not have to wait. We talked about pollution, you know, smells and light. The only light at the rear of the site is 50 feet from the residential property. It's 20 feet tall and is shielded and pointed downward, and we have lowered the output on these lights, so it's about one-foot candle at the light, and behind that light, the whole 50-foot buffer is zero-foot candles, so there shouldn't be any spill over onto those residential properties. And those lights will only be operating from eight to eight with the car wash. And then pollution, no idling when they're at the vacuums, that's typical, and the employees will help enforce that. All the detergents that are used are eco-friendly, phosphate-free, and everything's treated internally before it's discharged to the municipal sewer system, you know, oils, floatables, sediment, you know, detergents, so no- And in terms of traffic, the site has more than enough stacking on-site than what our tenant requires. I think we show about 20 spaces, but there's room for 30-plus spaces. Our tenant requires 18 stacking spaces on a busy day, and to also combat those busy days, they can control the speed of the conveyor. They keep it at a slow speed to provide the best wash, but if there is a super busy day and cars are, you know, down the line, they have the ability to increase the speed of that conveyor and move cars through more quickly, as well as having the 19 vacuums on-site to provide their customers with that free service and not have to wait. We talked about pollution, you know, smells and light. The only light at the rear of the site is 50 feet from the residential property. It's 20 feet tall and is shielded and pointed downward, and we have lowered the output on these lights, so it's about one-foot candle at the light, and behind that light, the whole 50-foot buffer is zero-foot candles, so there shouldn't be any spillover onto those residential properties. And those lights will only be operating from eight to eight with the car wash. And then pollution, no idling when they're at the vacuums, that's typical, and the employees will help enforce that. All the detergents that are used are eco-friendly, phosphate-free, and everything's treated internally before it's discharged to the municipal sewer system, you know, oils, floatables, sediment, you know, detergents, so no concern with pollution. There's a trash receptacle at each vacuum site, and five employees that clean the site at the end of each day, so there shouldn't be any litter either. Should I address your questions?
The only one was the, the wow factor, when it finally opens up, is that, that traffic that's sitting there waiting to get the car washed?
Sure, sure, yeah, there might be, you know, new customers trying to figure out, you know, the prices of our systems and stuff like that, and I actually went to a few that have first opened, and there'll be one employee stationed at the pay stations to kind of help guide everyone through, decide what they want, describe the membership system, and guide them through until everyone's aware of the system.
And also, Ms. McMackin, did you address, and I don't know that you really can, but the amount of water usage and would there be an effect on any downstream water pressure because this is a high-water consumer?
Yeah, not that we know of. Typically, when we get into the engineering phase, we have, you know, our mechanical-electrical plumbing plans, and the city will either say, you know, we do have adequate supply, or we're not sure, go get a flow test, and so we would get a flow test done at that point. But their technology inside the tunnel, their brand-new car wash, so they use more efficient equipment. They consume 70% less than other car washes, they use about 25 to 30 gallons per car, so that's another, you know, selling point for them, they pride themselves in that.
As I understand it, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think a lot of these newer car washes are recycling a fair amount of the water and then just introducing a certain percentage of fresh water to that. Is that kind of how this works?
So they have that capability, they have the reclaim tanks there, which treats it before it goes to the sewer system, but they also do have the capability to recycle the water. They really only see their Texas locations do that, or, you know, if there's a water shortage or drought issues, because it does affect the quality of the wash at the end of the day, so it's there if they need to use it in the future, but they don't plan to use it right now.
Okay, just, just doing cleaning of the water before it gets put into the sewer system. Okay. All right, any other questions for our petitioner? We got Mr. Bongero and then Mr. Long.
Mr. Chair, just a question, how did you settle on this location? Why was this spot, being that there's a car wash less than a mile away, like, why this spot?
Yeah, we touched on that car wash last week. You know, they really see themselves as a more modern brand with that, you know, monthly subscription and having these high-powered free vacuums, as opposed to the coin-operated vacuums. So they first look at, you know, what's the traffic level on the road? You know, are we going to get customers driving by? Are we going to, you know, add any unnecessary traffic to the road? You know, it's already a busy road. They look for surrounding compatible uses, so that would be, you know, we have auto all around us, the car dealership right there, that's a big selling factor for them. You know, of course, we have residential in the rear, which we always try to stay away from, but in a case like this, it seems like a great use, compatible use for the site.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bongero. Mr. Long?
Mr. Bongero addressed my concerns, thank you.
Stealing your thunder.
Yeah, it's okay, it's late. I'm all for consolidation.
Okay, any other questions from our, any of our petitioner, or, excuse me, our commissioners?
Thank you.
It is getting late. If there's no other questions or comments, then I'm going to ask for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. De Naro.
The approving resolution, the request to construct a new automated car wash facility, Whitewater Express, at 30471 Plymouth Road, is approved, subject to city council approval and the following conditions. One, the site plan identified as shee C2 dated January 27, 2023, prepared by Stonefield Engineering and Design, is approved and shall be adhered to. Two, all parking spaces, except the required handicap spaces, shall be double-stripped at least 10 feet wide by 20 feet in length. The hours of operation, including the vacuums, shall be limited to 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Four, the landscape plan identified as shee C6 dated January 27, 2023, prepared by Stonefield Engineering and Design, is approved and shall be adhered to. Five, all distributed, all disturbed lawn areas, including road right-of-way, shall be sodded instead of hydroseeding. Six, underground sprinklers shall be installed for all landscaped and sodded areas. All planted materials shall be installed to the satisfaction of the Inspection Department and permanently maintained in a healthy condition. Seven, the elevation plan identified as shee A200 dated November 16, 2022, prepared by REB Architects, is approved and shall be adhered to. Eight, the three walls of the dumpster enclosure shall be constructed with the same brick used in the construction of the building. If a poured wall is used, the design, texture, and color shall match the building. The enclosure gates shall consist of opaque and durable steel or composite panels. Nine, all rooftop mechanical equipment shall be concealed from public view on all sides by screening, consisting of material compatible in color with other exterior materials in the building. Ten, all light fixtures shall not exceed a height of 20 feet and shall be aimed and shielded to minimize stray light trespassing across property lines and glaring onto adjacent roadways. All exterior lights shall be turned off or dimmed between 8:30 PM and 7:30 AM. Eleven, only conforming signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Twelve, no LED light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on the site, including but not limited to the building or around the windows. Thirteen, unless approved by the Inspection Department, any type of exterior advertising, such as promotional flags, streamers, or sponsor vehicles designed to attract the attention of passing motorists, shall be prohibited. Fourteen, the plans referenced in the approving resolution shall be submitted to the Inspection Department with the building permit application. And lastly, fifteen, per section 13.13 of the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance, this approval is valid for one year from the date of approval by city council. Unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null-imboid after the one-year period.
Sir, support? Support?
Support.
All right, we have a motion. I still heard it. We have a motion to approve by Mrs. De Naro and supported by Mr. Long. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Torremin?
Yeah, if the maker of the motion and the supporter might accept potential change to condition number four, after listening to the petitioner and their willingness to add landscaping where needed, I would like to consider maybe additional plantings, buffering the residential, and also, and we'll fashion the language on this item to address replacing any dead-dying or diseased trees, existing landscaping. You know, by the time this gets developed and the impacts from construction, should there be any on those existing, we'd like to see those replaced in kind, so I'd like to improve that, that part of the resolution to improve the, or to increase the screening between this project and the residential.
All right, thank you, Mr. Torremin. Our maker of the motion is okay with it, is the supporter?
Emphatically, yes.
Okay, so we have a slight modification to the landscaping portion of the approval. Any further discussion? If not, if the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. De Naro?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Bongero?
No.
Care of magnate votes aye, chairman votes aye.
Votes no. Motion passes, we'll go to city council on approving recommendation. We wish you good luck. And that reads, it takes care of the public hearing section of our agenda, believe it or not. We now move on to the miscellaneous section of our agenda. Item number six.
Item number six, and this is a motion to hold a public hearing to consider amendments to the Livonia Vision 21 zoning ordinance, petition number 2023-01-06-01.
And these are amendments that are going to be made to our zoning ordinance, corrections, typos, all that type of stuff, is that correct, Mr. Torremin?
It's a full batch of changes, and we, it's, the way the, it operates now, we had to publish this, so it is scheduled for February 14th, so.
Guys can all enjoy your Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's Day. And is there a, someone willing to make the motion to hold that public hearing?
Does it have to be February 14th, or can we go later? Could we do the 20th?
Well, it's already been advertised, we can, we'll keep it on the 14th, we can, we can just push it back a few, a couple of weeks, but since it's already been advertised, we'll...
We'll just get it done, that's fine. I'll make the motion to do it on the 14th.
All right, and there's support by Mr. Bongero. I don't think there's any major objection to voting aye on that, so I'll ask that we show five to support that motion? And we are all set for that. Next, we move on to item seven.
That's the approval of the minutes of the 1,193rd Public Hearing and Regular Meeting held by this planning commission on November 15, 2022.
Unfortunately, we do not have enough people here tonight that are, were present at that meeting to approve those minutes, so I believe, we only have three.
We get to tape it to the 14th.
We're going to administratively move that to our next agenda as well, where we'll resolve it at that time, okay? So that takes us to the end of our agenda. Is there any further business that come before the Planning Commission tonight? Nope, not? I don't see anybody coming forward, so...
Can I make the motion to adjourn?
You are welcome to make a motion to adjourn by Mrs. De Naro, and is there support?
Support that.
Mr. Bongero's gladly supporting it, and if there's no objections, I think we can safely show five to adjourn this meeting tonight. I do want to thank Livonia Television staff for sticking around and bringing this meeting to the community, and also recording it, which I'm sure it will be one of our most-watched meetings.
It's a good thing they don't have to use videotape anymore.
Exactly, they'd be running out of videotape. So thank you to both the community and to our staff and everybody for bringing this meeting to the community tonight. I would like to thank our citizens and wish them a good night at, as we adjourn this meeting at exactly, oh, no, it's 11:06 PM. Good night, Livonia.